City Council meeting, six P M., Wednesday, August fifth, two thousand and twenty, City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Adam Quirk, will you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, whose existence one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, the public hearing regarding General Plan two thousand and twenty.
Did everybody get one of these?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public meeting for the general plan. I have it up on the board, and I've only made two copies of that. So I think there's one copy for down here, and I think I put a copy up on the diet.
Yeah, I got it right here, and it's mine.
We were hoping that Maria was going to join us on the general plan, but I don't see that she joined us. I don't know if we have technical difficulty with that, but I know that Sam, Mr. Samuel Boss is with us on the hangouts here. Mr. Massey might be aware of some public comment that came in during the P N C public hearing notice. I don't believe we received any other public comments for this meeting, not that I am aware of. Mr. Boss has not informed me of anything, and I don't think Letty has received anything, nor Mr. Massey.
Not nothing.
The public comments that I understand that were brought up in the P N C meeting have been taken into consideration for this plan, and now it's in front of the Senate for approval. And if I'm not mistaken, once you all approve it, we will be taking it to the board for their approval.
Is there any, anything special, anything that you might think, Mr. Massey, that the members of the council are aware of, that you received during the P N C meetings?
The city's consultant, Maria Maske, has been very outgoing with her interaction with staff and members of public, and also members of the city council. I think some members of the city council attended a couple of the planning and zoning meetings by phone. And so my impression is that the council has been informed of the process, informed of the substance of the general plan. So the hope, of course, of staff is that council is familiar with the document, has confidence in the process by which the document was drafted, and is now ready to adopt it at your level and refer it to the voters of the city for final consideration and ratification at the November election.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Yes, councilman.
I've been criticized, Mayor, because I turned around and I keep the mic there behind. Mr. Massey, this has to be approved today to meet the legal timeframes?
It is not absolutely essential that it be approved today. I think we can go to the latest in September, but if we have any reason for not approving it today, if you wanted to revise it or anything like that, my recommendation would be to plan a special meeting later this month, if at all possible, because the deadline is very tight. We can make it easily if it's adopted today. But the reason why we planned it out so that it would come to council today is because there is a possibility that we could even extend the deadline a little bit further, but absolutely not beyond the September meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Massey. Mr. Mayor, I attended virtually both of the planning and zoning meetings. I didn't participate. I think Councilman Mondal is the only one who participated with his concern about the cemetery, and Councilman Henesian was also there. I feel very comfortable with this. The planning and zoning members were very diligent in their questioning and their understanding. I felt very comfortable that they had a great level of comprehension of the plan itself. Their questions were very inquisitive. I did, I think that I did not like about the meeting, Mayor, is that our microphone systems here in this chamber are terrible. You can't hear when you're participating like that, and these might need to get changed and updated as soon as possible. I guess the only thing, I am very supportive of the plan. I feel very comfortable with it. I've gone over it with it. I don't feel comfortable that Maria is not attending this meeting.
Just close it?
Yes. But maybe, I just want to make sure that somebody can respond that Mr. Barr had some concerns that they alluded to, and I think Mr. Corey did too. I just want to make sure that their concerns were drawn down into the plan. That's the only thing that I have right now. But I'm supportive of it. But I noticed that, or Mr. David Fernandez, is it, that made a lengthy presentation on behalf of the Barrs. I just want to know, and I don't know if the planning and zoning director can highlight, were their concerns incorporated into the plan? That's what I'd like to know.
Sam, if you can hear, if there was a question, possibly can help us answer that question.
Yes, the comments made by Mr. Barr for the comment to review by Maria Maske, I see incorporated those into the comment matrix that was related to the question. I believe some of the comments were more questions, looking for where to take it around to the plan. So I usually responded to them as questions. I believe there was one or two minor tweaks, one regarding a utility station, and then the other one regarding DOT maps, and the DOT, using the most updated DOT maps. And I feel like Maria answered those questions in the general matrix, and, you know, the house, that they provided feedback, and they caused us to update some maps from the DOT and other local agencies.
Yes, Corey, councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Boss, those A D O T maps, did any new roadways come into play, or were they highlighted that weren't on the maps before?
So Maria references the most recent A D O T maps, and I believe that there were some updates to the A D O T maps in reference to local roads. And so we updated, you know, some of the graphics on the maps. But I believe most of those were, you know, small, small changes to the maps, nothing major, no, no major thoroughfares or anything like that. It was just kind of updating information.
So what were some of the comments that the planning and zoning commissioners made as far as their feelings about the general plan?
In general, I think the planning and zoning commission is excited to see the general plan be adopted and approved. I think the planning and zoning commissioner is active now and capable of guiding future developments, so I think they're rather excited. They echoed some other questions, and I believe Mr. Mondal regarding cemetery, open space, those type of things. But I believe in general, they're just excited to start pushing for a better Nogales. They also had a question regarding communication, and so included in the new general plan is a matrix that talks about, you know, what director, what department, what agency is responsible in committing some of these policies and goals and objectives. But in general, I think they're enthusiastic to see the plan go to the voters.
And tell me, Mr. Boss, what was your participation, because you're kind of a latecomer into the process, what was your participation in this project?
So I came into the process midstream. In March, I reviewed all the documents, the background conditions. Previous to that, I reviewed the two thousand and ten general plan, which this is greatly built off of. I did some research for a local agency I worked at, and so one of the documents we referred to do research on was the City of Nogales two thousand and ten general plan. So I was well aware that there was a lot of overlap between these two documents. I feel like, you know, smaller cities, like the City of Nogales benefited greatly from a general plan update. I feel like that provides a lot of resources in pursuing grants, looking at state funding, trying to match leverage money in the future. I also think small towns, clearly post-COVID, are going to be looking at utilizing those resources greatly in the future. Besides that, I participated in numerous general plans from major counties to small towns, and kind of felt like that's a good document, it's a good guide document. It puts Nogales in a position to win in the future. And I think, I think we should look at it as a resource in the future, all departments, all directors, all council members, to look at the general plan as the greatest resource in improving the City of Nogales.
Mr. Boss, I didn't see a narrative from you to the mayor and council highlighting what you say to have a better Nogales and highlighting the points of the general plan. Did you submit a narrative with your recommendations?
No, I submitted the summary of the planning and zoning commission.
Yeah, well, so, Mr. Boss, why didn't you submit a narrative that highlights all of these points and make a recommendation to the council?
I believe I was trying to do that through the planning and zoning commission hearing, and I was vocal with any concerns or any strategies in the planning and zoning commission. So I was trying to really support that through the planning and zoning summary, and I believe I supported that with my support recommendation, so. Especially if you needed that, I apologize, I'm not submitting that, but I was trying to really make it from the planning and zoning commission.
Well, the planning and zoning, those are just highlights. They don't, it's not a breadth or depth of knowledge of all of the efforts that's been put in here and highlighting for the mayor and council so we can respond to the public. As an administrator, you should, you should have submitted that to the mayor and council, to the city manager. The city manager should have demanded that document be in place. Mayor, I think that that was lacking, but I'm ready to proceed. I think we're, I spent time attending the meetings. I'd just like for staff to always submit something that comes once every ten years should be, we should have a breadth and depth of recommendations of the plan, the integrity of the plan, so that when we respond to the public, or if some council member has a question five years from now, we can always go back and say, these were the recommendations from the planning and zoning director. I don't need a synopsis of a planning and zoning meeting for that. Mayor, I'm ready to go forward now. I don't want to hold up this project.
I just want to mention something, whoever put this together, the packet, John. The vice mayor is actually Hector, not Mondal. And the planning and zoning commission, half of those people aren't even here. You need to update it with the people that have been listening to the planning and zoning commission or general plan meetings, the new commission, and update the vice mayor's position.
Yes.
Okay, before you put it out there, because, so we can. But I also agree, I think it's good. Besides that, thank you.
Yeah, the entire page.
Yeah. Mr. Henesian?
Yeah, I think we have to reiterate what the importance of this is, right? A lot of people really don't understand what it's all about, and how important it is for being able to get different grants, for being able to get different money, and basically for the state to help us out with this. I think that has to be brought out.
Yeah, the important thing to the public is that the general plan is basically a roadmap for the next ten years. Because, you know, not telling you exactly what you're going to do all that, because I was part of the previous one, and I don't remember doing anything we had talked about back then. We didn't do anything for ten years. So, and here we are, bringing it again to the public, ten years later, and I hope, I hope that the next ten years are different, that something can be done to improve and have a stronger vision for our city, for the future. And that's, that's what a general plan is supposed to be in. And I know it's, it's a document that helps us, because it's voted the people and, and a vote of us today to proceed with this for the future, so. I do agree. Is there any other discussion?
May I just highlight a point?
Yes, go ahead.
I just noticed this right now when I opened this, going through this, Mr. Kissinger. This is what it says. Municipal property taxes. The city currently assesses a property tax to provide police and fire protection for the city. The city has a primary and a secondary tax. The property taxes paid by the residents are levied by agencies. That's right. It's incorrect.
Yes.
Are you sure it's correct?
Well, yeah, we should, we should, but that's, well, it's not so much that, but my point, Mr. Kissinger, is Mr. Boss should have reviewed every word in this document. These errors should not have been occurred if Mr. Boss had done his due diligence on this project.
Yeah, because we're voting on this document. I didn't go word by word or page by page, but I mean, I'm sure that, I hope everything is, yes, go ahead, vice mayor.
Yes, sir. Does this plan, is this plan available to the public before it goes to the vote?
But the document should be placed out here in the lobby, but then again, with our city calls right now to the public, I don't know where we could actually put it out.
How about the website?
Maybe the website, the whole document, though, it's a big one. Maybe we could do the website thing. I don't know if people would read it on the website, but we could outline it on the website. John, could we do that, outlining it on the website, kind of, you know, give a? Sam, is it currently on the website?
It's currently not on the website. If it is approved tonight, we could put all the documents available on the website and provide a short summary update, because the document itself is rather lengthy, so we can provide it more of a bullet point overview, and that we can easily do.
Yeah, we could do that, and then if we open up City Hall, not this month, next month, I don't know when, maybe we can, before the election, we can, we can put it out.
As I'm looking at this here, Mr. Mayor, we need to add Mr. Diaz. So I think, I think this started, the plan document started prior to some of the changes.
Yeah, but not the meetings. The meetings were recent.
No, the public meetings.
Yeah, yeah, this year, and then, and then the document should be with the voting body, you know, the members of the council, even if it started back then.
Yeah, because they haven't correct on the memorandum, the vice mayor, but they didn't make that. And then they have Mr. Rojas on there.
Yeah.
They still have Jeanette on there.
Yeah, all that's got to be removed.
There's got to be some changes.
Mr. Kissinger, those changes have already been identified for correction. There'll also be some corrections to the pages and kind of the formatting as well, and so we can kind of do those all simultaneously.
And then we need to look at that sales tax statement, Mr. Boss.
Yeah.
Proper, proper.
Proper, I'm sorry, proper. Members of the council, are we ready? Any discussion? Okay. We're going to, we're going to go around here. Yes, yes, we're going to bring it down to the resolution.
Agree on the, on the changes that we just discussed.
Yes, yes. So we're going to close the public hearing part, and we're going to go to number four Consideration of possible action of resolution R. two thousand and twenty dash zero eight dash zero zero nine, a resolution of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, adopting general plan two thousand and twenty, and referring the same to the voters for ratification at the general election on November third, two thousand and twenty. So, second. All right. Any discussion? Any, none, all in favor, city members, saying aye? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Number five, discussion items. A, discussion and possible direction to staff regarding modifying the City of Nogales personnel manual to limit the hour of overtime work by police and fire to reduce the liability of the city's contribution to the public safety retirement system. Is there a second? Second. Well, there's discussion, Mr. Verona?
Yeah, there's no policy statement in front of us right now, but I think, Mr. Kissinger, you want to allude to what you handed out.
Sure. So, two things, Mr. Mayor, before I forget, we'll go to our next item, if you don't mind, we need to deviate from the agenda and bring the financial report up, so we can get this Walker input on it and then get it off to me. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate if you can do that.
All right.
On this item here, this was an item that was requested, replaced on a future agenda item by Dr. Verona. I have not had the opportunity to actually get the personnel manual section where it deals with overtime, but I have passed it out to the draw, draw room. I'd like to make some recommendations on how to change that policy in a manual and incorporate it in the manual and bring it back for approval from mayor and council. I'm anticipating possibly being able to do it in September meeting. My discussion with Dr. Verona is that if we can limit some of the overtime for both police and fire, we limit financially our responsibility for the P S P R risks. As we all know, it's a, it's a pretty expensive liability that we have, not only our, our past liability, our pending, unfunded liability, but our annual liabilities going forward. I haven't done the analysis on what type of change and how it relates to our liability. I would have to try to do that, give you that information. I've had conversations with both the chief of police and the fire chief, and what we could do to limit or at least spread that overtime out amongst all the departments so that, so it's not just with a select few of employees, and that would have an impact on the liability. So with that being said, I'd like to have that opportunity to possibly bring back for implementation, modification to our personnel policy, along with some other ones that we have identified, and hopefully in the meeting process. So it would be our overtime policy and some other policy changes, personnel policy changes that were contemplated in the mayor's office.
Okay. Councilman Verona?
No, Mr. Mayor, I support the comments that Mr. Kissinger has made, and if that, if Councilman Henesian is, if that's his motion to go ahead and instruct the city manager to proceed with policy development on this overtime, public safety overtime, then I would concur with Councilman Henesian.
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead, councilman.
You're doing an excellent job, Mr. Kissinger, and I'm looking at this, at this chapter seventeen here. How about the stonewall? Will that be part of the equation? Because I know, you know, all the, all the PD, they do a lot of stonewalling, and that's where they get their, their real high, high numbers, so. And I know that's been a big present on our budget, is paying for stonewalling, so, you know, is, is all this going to affect stonewalling, or is, you know?
So, Mr. Diaz, it would be my intention, or my conversation with the chief, which will include any overtime, including this carbon, including stonewalling, any other grant, any type of overtime, and take it one step further, there was even a conversation about off-duty performance, regulations put into this, to ensure that our employees aren't working too many hours and coming to work in a tired, you know, working too many hours, let's say, an off-duty job, and then coming to work and not getting enough rest, so we would be looking at that to potentially incorporate off-duty, off-duty or second job type issues. So, yes, also.
And I hope we, I hope we keep stonewalling, because it gives our, our PD guys, you know, gets more money and stuff like that, and it's federal, but, but the, the retirement part is the one that's going to go, so.
Slipping the off, over.
Now, I, Councilman Henesian?
Yes, Mr. Kissinger, also, we were, we were shown some papers everywhere, where every dollar we get from stonewalls, it costs the city sixty-six cents. I think that was, that was the paper that we were shown. So actually, it is costing us quite a lot of money to carry the stonewall in, and that's why I guess cities like Tucson have bypassed it. So, you know, if it's costing us that much, we really have to make some kind of huge adjustment, not a little adjustment, we have to make some kind of huge adjustment to see how we can fix that.
Mayor? Go ahead. So it's my understanding that our stonewalling grant covers all the E R Es, will include the retirement, retirement charges? But, but the problem with that extra money is what it does is it adds to our future liability for our pension. So we need to lower the amount of hours that we work for stonewalling. Stonewalling currently pays our current liability, but it's not working, the stonewall adds to our point. So, yes, you're right.
That's right, he's right.
Thank you, thank you. So, any more discussion decided?
Was that then, are we voting on Councilman Henesian's motion to direct, Mr. Kissinger?
Is that what we're voting? Do we have a second on that? Yes. We did have a second on that? Okay. And it's okay, Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to deviate to the financial monthly report, that'll be number eight, on your second page, page two.
Mayor, thank you for deviating for the finance report, and we updated the graph that's in the report, and I put it right on top of it, I didn't have time to take it all apart today, but there's a new graph on it, and I'm positive that it has to be with us, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Pat Walker, and she can walk you through that report if there's any questions on the financial report.
Okay, thank you, John, Mayor, members of the council. What the chart was updated with is that it had been prepared until June nineteenth, and that all the filings had not been completed, so I wanted to give the most current and updated chart on sales tax for the filings. Now, there's a big distinction between filings and collections, and really, the filings can be a little misleading because of the fact that somebody could be paying their taxes from January and May, or from a prior year, or getting a refund, so I don't put a lot of weight with the filings. What I look at more is the money in the bank. And the one chart that has its title, two thousand nineteen twenty, City of Nogales tax collected as of June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, that one's been updated too, but if you look at the top of that chart, you took in for the entire year, ten million five eighty-four seven thirty-nine, as compared to last year, that you took in nine million three seventy-six five thirty. In other words, every month, with the exception of April, you took in more than you took in in the prior fiscal year. So even with COVID nineteen, the, the city is going to see a lag because of sales tax collections that are, that are collected in like May, they don't have to pay them till June, they don't send them out to cities till July, so there's always a lag on, on the filings. But overall, in collections, the, the city's done much better. Now, this is preliminary, because we're in the midst of completing year-end entries, and reversing out receivables and putting in the new ones and that sort of thing, so this is a preliminary number. Once we get into the audit, we'll be coming back with final numbers for the council, but what this tells me is that so far, it's been doing okay in light of all the issues associated with COVID nineteen on sales tax. This includes sales tax for both the regular local sales tax and public safety, as well as the bed tax, and so that's the bit of good news that we. And, um, so that's the bit of good news that we have. Overall, um, there are two departments that went over on their budget at this point. Again, it's preliminary because we finalized everything in the audit, but it was facilities, maintenance and cemetery. And the reason that they went over budget was because of, uh, utilities came in higher than anticipated and some equipment repairs. And then at the cemetery, there had not been any salaries appropriated in nineteen twenty. So, that's why that one's coming up a little bit higher. Overall, you're way under, you're only, you, you've only spent seventy-eight point four seven percent of your budget and, uh, your appropriated budget. So, that's, that's good news. It's just in those departments, um, that you went over a little bit on those. And again, we'll be coming back to council with approval for budget transfer on those once we get the audit, um, underway. Other than that, um, overall, again, I think, uh, the City of Nogales has done very well. Um, you collected about ninety-nine percent of your budget. So, that's about right on target. And we're just gonna have to keep monitoring it now that we're into July and August and things are not trembling around a hundred percent yet. We're gonna have to monitor the, the tax collections closely. I know state share sales taxes are going down. Um, so, we're, we're gonna have to keep an eye on that too. With that, I would be not going to answer any questions.
Oh. Go ahead, Councilman.
How much money did we send to the state on the unfunded pension liability?
About three point one million.
Does that, I just wanna, does that three point one million, is that to offset the current pension liability of the year? Or does that put against the thirty million dollars unfunded liability?
This only goes against the current liability for fiscal year twenty-one as for police and fire both. But just to kind of give you an example, their current rate of return is seven point three percent and you're earning point oh six on your Wells Fargo account.
No, I understand that. And I understand that our, our, our upper management has taken a very prudent, conservative financial approach on how it handles affairs along with the directors, and I compliment them for their, uh, wise expenditure and keeping, uh, the business community in light of our revenues. But I, I'm just, I guess, let, let me narrow my question to ask. Do we have to, are we going to wait for that presentation that I guess you're jointly gonna make next month with Mr. Vazquez? Mike, so I, I wanna know how we are we going to reduce by twenty thirty-five? Are we gonna make a policy statement like Oro Valley? How are we gonna start to dwindle that, those thirty million dollars in liability so that we don't have a problem in twenty thirty-five? And if you get a chance, Mr. Massey, I'd like to know for the next meeting, what is the, what is the penalty? If a city does not ha, reduce it by the year twenty thirty-five, what is the penalty for the city? Do we lose revenue? Do we lose funding? I just wanna know what the penalty is.
Right. Pat, did you, did you understand the question you talked about the, the, the budget set aside that we put aside for the unfunded liability? Uh, we haven't sent that check off. We're waiting for, uh, an update from yourself and Mr. Vazquez. And I, I think we're scheduled for, uh, next month's meeting to come up with the best, uh, strategy on how to deal with that.
Yes, um, Mayor, members of the council, um, that's what we're gonna do is bring forward. There's two point six million in the fiscal year twenty-one budget that has been set aside to, um, go towards the unfunded liability. There's been a lot of discussions with a lot of different cities about pension obligation bonds, about, um, whether or not to spend the money. And so, what we wanna do, and I've talked to Michael, is present the facts to council to be able to consider and make an informed decision on whether you wanna move ahead with that or you don't. There's, there's recommendations. I'm gonna be sending out some information to council from the Government Finance Officers Association. I've got a couple of articles that have been written about pension obligation bonds and things. So, there's a lot of education that we wanna do so that when we have a discussion in September, council can then give direction to, um, us on how you wanna proceed with that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I understand now. I, I just wanna bring clarity to the subject. And if you can enhance that with your opinion at the next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it?
Any other questions?
No, fine.
Pat, thank you very much and thank you for joining us on the reading and, uh, we'll be talking to you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you, Pat. Okay, uh, discussion items B, uh, City of Nogales Employment Benefit Trust, which would be appointment of city council member to EBT Board of Trustees. The other one, discussion possible direction to staff regarding trust plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Before we get into, before we get into a motion here, I think.
Could I please give you permission to address some questions?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Massey, could you just give us? I'm confused now. All of a sudden, you did your research and everything, but tell me how we got to this point.
Well, we got to this point, Mr. Mayor, members of council, mostly because of your, uh, bringing up the topic, Councilman Verona, on a number of occasions here at the city council meeting. And what that has just done is it spurred, uh, both my office and then the EBT trustees to, um, first of all, get them, uh, engaged with an attorney who is their attorney. There is an attorney from Gus Rosenfeld Law Firm that the EBT trustees have retained as, as their legal advice because, uh, the way that this topic has come up, uh, it was very evident to me that some of the interests expressed here at the city council is not the same interest that has been expressed at the trustee level. So, what we first had to do is get attorney and attorney discussions going. And so, that, that happened several months ago. We have a very knowledgeable attorney that, uh, the trustees have retained. She's very, uh, easy and cooperative to work with, and I've appreciated the opportunity to work with here, her. And the first thing that she pointed out was the composition of the board of trustees as it's currently composed and as it's written into the plan document is not consistent with the statute. And so, um, remedy needed to go forward. And the remedy has been presented to the board of trustees and the board of trustees has amended the plan document. So, what happened, I believe, back in your tenure, Councilmember Verona, when you were mayor, you created the board of trustees, you created the employee benefit trust. And that document states that the trustees at a unanimous vote can amend the plan document. So, the plan document is not a document that city council owns and controls and works with. So, that's why this amendment did not come forward to council for consideration. In fact, the amendment went to the trustees and the trustees unanimously adopted the, uh, the proposal that was drafted by their attorney. And what that proposal, uh, and that amendment has done now is it says that the trustees shall be composed of, uh, one council representative, one employee representative, and then three outside volunteers, essentially, three community members. And that's what the statute requires. So, that has been done. And so, as a result of that, um, change to the plan document, the element that now is in front of the mayor and council for your action is to go ahead and make the appointment of one of your members to the, uh, trust, uh, board of trustees. And as soon as that person is, uh, appointed, we have only four trustees right now instead of five. So, I think we'll be able to put that member right on the board of trustees right away. But then, what the plan document, the amendment to the plan document says is that the current board of trustees will vote to A, select an employee representative, and then B, to select three outside volunteer members to be the, uh, uh, those three, uh, appointees. And then, once that, uh, new trust, uh, board is sworn in, then that's, that, uh, board of trustees will be consistent with the statute. And that should happen probably no later than, um, either the end of this month or the end of next month's meeting. So, there is going to be a board of trustees meeting at the end of the month. And I think, uh, the plan, if everything goes well, is that the board of trustees at that meeting will vote to appoint the successor trustees. And then those trustees get sworn in and the trust continues on.
Mayor?
Go ahead. The statute that you make reference to, how old is that statute?
I don't have that statute in front of me, so I don't have that, uh, memorized, but it, it, it goes back to either the eighties or the nineties. So, it's been on the books for quite a while.
Okay. When we did this originally, I was a member of the council.
Yes.
Okay. This is my point, Mayor. We've run into some obstacles here with the city manager form of government. Here is a statute that is not sixty days old. It is not one year old. It is not five years old. Why is it that we have a city manager form of government and a member of the council has to bring these things up? And why is it that when we had a, our elected representative on the board, he was thrown off and the, off of that board?
If I can respond, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The elected representative at that time was the former mayor.
Right.
And he voted. It had to be unanimous. He voted himself off. So, when he voted on that motion, uh, the motion was to change, it, at that point, it was four employee representatives and the mayor. And the mayor approved it. And so, it changed from four employees to five employees. And that was about two years ago.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. But the statute was still in place when that happened.
The statute was still in place.
So, how did we get to that point? Why didn't somebody say something?
I, I don't have a good answer to that.
Sometimes they, they, we get, and, and I feel comfortable criticizing because I'm the one who went out, uh, to have this charter changed. But people don't realize that sometimes we have to do our due diligence and we just don't sit here and say, oh, it's a city manager from our government, so we're gonna go out in the corner and sit in the corner and not do anything.
That is not part of the city manager form of government. The council is not a do-nothing council under a council manager form of government, just by the way.
You see, Mayor, we need to also bring this out. We're not here just to, to sit. We, we can go out and ask questions. We can go out and give directives, but most of our questions should be asked in this council format. But still, Mr. Massey, we're having a city attorney at that time and everything. This should not have happened. That's the point I want to make, Mayor, not anything else. These things should not have occurred.
When I was mayor in my previous administration, I was part of the board for four years.
Yes.
That's why it was strange to come back and, and everything was changed and then that's what they told me that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead now.
What did you?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just said it.
No, go ahead and make your recommendation.
Oh, no, make a recommendation.
Well, that's how we govern ourselves.
Yes. No, I, I know that. But I mean, uh, is there anybody on the board? Anybody a member of the council wanna be part of the board? I'll go ahead and ask first.
You would be good for that.
Is there anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to nominate Jorge Maldonado to serve on the EBT board.
Second. Second. All right. Discussion.
Excellent choice.
Okay. Some people say, don't mention me. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Um, Mr. Mayor, just. You're part of the board now.
Mr. Mayor, just a final comment to Mr. Massey. Please don't let these things go by like this, Mr. Massey. That's not how we should run business. Eric, we should be business and, you know, you should help us. And when things go wrong, you weren't there, but these things should not happen, Mr. Massey.
It, it's an ongoing process, Mr. Mayor, where I think we're always, uh, looking for opportunities to improve and certainly looking for opportunities to make sure we're in compliance with statutes and regulations. I mean, that's absolutely should be part of our, um, DNA and we, but unfortunately, that's not always been the case, but we're moving.
I just wanna say one thing, and I'm sure you all know, uh, Mr. Massey has been working very hard in making sure that a lot of these things, you know, are brought back to, you know? Put it this way, the basics, the policies, everything that, so we can run smoother.
Right.
You know, and run the proper way, you know, because he's been doing a lot of stuff with the charter and putting it in order just by changing one number or one, you know, it, it's just easier for us to do our work as, as elected officials. So, you know, you've been doing a great job, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you just continue this, and I'm sure one day we'll have a, a great working documents here. And I hope nobody comes back later on and decides to change it around.
That's true. That's why we have to have policies to make sure everyone's.
Okay. And, uh, that's all we need on this one, Mr. Massey.
Well, then, it was the opportunity for, uh, council to weigh in on any further direction that, uh, council chooses to, uh, you know, to voice at this point with the, uh, with the trust and trust document.
Go ahead.
The only thing that I'd just like to say, but I, I'm one of the original members that started that EBT board way back in the early eighties. It's a good board. We're self-funded. The insurance coverage is excellent. What they're doing now to make sure the employees stay healthy is extremely well. The healthier our employees are, the less we have to pay out. I think it's an excellent board and I'd like to see it continue, but I just want to make sure that, uh, everything is done in the proper way so it lasts for another fifty years or so on that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. All right. We'll move along. C, discussion, possible direction, keeping all city facilities closed to walk in visitors and cus, visitor and customers during the month of August due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. I guess that's self-explanatory. Right, your second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just, I'd like to hear Mr. Kissinger's recommendation.
Just go ahead.
My own recommendation that we remain, uh, vote. I want to put it on the agenda if I have to do that for the next one.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Kissinger. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. D, discussion on recruitment process of city manager. I placed this on the agenda. And I know it's probably something that you're all very interested in doing. Very interested in doing. That's a good one. Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, what I said last time is that we don't wanna go six months. We don't wanna go two, three months. I'm, honestly, we don't wanna go. But we need to do something and do it now. But this is one thing I wanna do. I'm not gonna sit, sit here and, and bring out a name and say, this is what we're gonna be doing. No. I want you all to be part of this, okay? Cause this is something that is very important for the council to do because this, uh, the city manager, we want somebody that, that's gonna, uh, I mean, hit the ground running. That's a city manager, okay? A real one. And, and something that we can really, we can really, uh, all be part of it, okay? So, so let's, uh, let's, all of us have some impact on this, okay? So, I'll open up the room. Can you tell me what is, Mr. Hennessy?
Are you having a problem? Do you, do you need some help? Call the IT guy.
Just call someone. Okay, do we, do we have anything, uh, nice, let's start with you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, yeah. Are, are we going to go out of state and national, nationwide search for a search? Cause I, I believe that, you know, we should start local and maybe in, in state before we go outside.
Well.
I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of talent in the, in the community that could, that could be approached or recruited and just. be approached or recruited and just give them a chance for an interview.
Amen.
Well, this is the thing, and that's why I'm saying that I'm not gonna sit here and expect to go playing around mid-December and thinking about who we're gonna select. No, none of this. It's, it's, we need a city manager, okay? So, so I think if we put it out nationally and we put it further, we're gonna be talking about this in January, February. We don't, we do not need this, all right? That's a good, that's a good point. Does anybody else have to say something to say?
I second the same.
You feel the same way?
I wish someone locally would be, be a good person, so I'm.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Council.
I think we do have to get it with the league of cities and towns, and they have a list of available city managers that we could look at immediately. I mean, you know, without, without having to go very deeply into it, you know, they keep posting it, they keep posting different, different city positions for different cities in Arizona. So at least they, they should have a list of available city managers.
I think, I think the attempt was done last time within the state, and I think we only had a handful of people that, that applied for it. The league of cities and towns I know are very helpful in something like this. We can reach out to them, why not? But I don't wanna sit here and wait for them to make a decision when they're gonna do it for us. But we also need the human resources to be on top of this if we're gonna go and extend that, that, that to the league of cities and towns. Because the league of cities and towns, what they're gonna do, they're not gonna go local, they're gonna go all around. And I know that's what they do, because what they're gonna do, the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna say Nogales. Nogales is unique. I mean, are we gonna bring somebody from South Dakota for Nogales?
No.
You know, you gotta, you gotta know somebody bilingual, somebody good, that, 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 like I said, hits the ground running and, and understands. We made a mistake last time, and I'll be the first one to admit it. We made a big mistake the way we did the process of it, and I think we shouldn't have gone that way. We should have gone with people that are city managers, not, not, hey, we'll pick this one, we'll pick that one because he's got a master's, this one's got, no, no. City managers that don't run cities or run different governments, that have municipal, that have any government in a manager position, not just anybody that runs an office and says, you know, I can be a city manager. 'Cause it's gonna happen, we're gonna, same thing's gonna happen. They're really not gonna know what to do when they come in, and they're gonna expect John to teach them what to do. They're gonna expect us to talk and, and, and guide them on, on the city charter, and then later on, they're gonna say, oh, you know, the mayor's getting involved, or the city council's getting involved. No, we don't need that, we need somebody. So, you know, let's, let's think about this. This is gonna be serious here. Does there anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do concur with Councilwoman Lopez's echoing the remarks of Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor's remarks, Vice Mayor Bohorkas. And the only thing I wanna say about the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I'm not quite convinced if they have a resource like the Arizona School Boards Association where they, you pay them to handle the recruitment. Last time when I talked to the previous director, gave me the impression that they don't do that. What they do have for us is what the city of Douglas did, is that they have a list of retired city managers and assistant city managers, and you can negotiate an agreement with them like the city of Douglas did. They brought in an outside, I think the former city manager, deputy city manager of Glendale, and she took over there for the last eighteen months. She just retired, and they brought in a deputy city manager from one of the metropolitan areas in Phoenix. And she, she was the deputy city manager, and she now just became the, the city manager for the, the city of Douglas. I don't quite agree with you, Mayor, on that the last recruitment process in, in and of itself, how we handled it, and it was a failure. I think what was wrong, as I went through all of those applications, is a lot of people overthought their qualifications, and they really didn't understand the integrity of the job requirement itself. What I was looking for when we said, 'cause I don't think right now that it's, at that time, that you absolutely have to get somebody that's been a city manager to come and run the, the city government. You can get a CEO from a major corporation that can come over here and do that, and do very well at that with business experience and that. Unfortunately, we didn't get that. We got the wrong kind of an applicant. When I brought that up, it was because I wanted somebody that probably was looking for something else, but that had a wealth of experience in corporate America. That's what I, I was looking at. I think that this time around, we're going to need somebody that loves Nogales, that's been in Nogales, that cares about Nogales, that has a solid background in that, in the field of being either a city, an upper management in municipal or county government or state government. I don't wanna spend time when we have, I feel, my opinion, my personal opinion is, that there is one individual who applied, that, that one individual who applied that has management experience, upper management experience, only received two votes for the position. But I think it is worthy and incumbent upon us to give him, before we start, an opportunity to interview and, and see how he reacts to our concerns. To give him an interview, I don't wanna hand out a position or anything like that, but I think that a local person who has these qualifications and is interested in reactivating that application, that I don't see anything wrong with that. I, I want somebody just like all of you here, that love Nogales, that wants to do well for Nogales, that wants Nogales to succeed. And I, I don't want to bring out and everybody start because he's a neighbor, bringing out all the negative connotations of individuals. I'm not, I'm not interested in that, in that playbook at all. I want somebody that's going to stay here, that has a home here, and, and has intellectual endeavors, that wants to make us better. And I think this person at least deserves, before we go anyplace, for us to interview him, an intense interview, and then have a, a nice public discussion on his merits to handle this position. I just don't wanna go out, and I think because of what happened previously, the two previous times, let's give a local person an opportunity to display his skills. And, and I would like to see, and put up for Mayor and Council's consideration, that we at least offer an interview to Greg Lucero to come over here, who has an array of business experience, who has brought millions of dollars to our community, who is now in a corporate America position to do that. I just don't see anything wrong with offering the mayor, authorize the mayor to make arrangements, to have an interview for us, and start the dialogue there, what we're, what we want and what we're looking for. But sometimes, you know, we're afraid to look at our own neighbors, because sometimes we, we have nothing constructive to say. We find all the negatives that we come out. Mr. Lucero and I don't agree on several things, but he does have experience and did well as a county manager, and he's doing very well in corporate America. So I offer for the Council's consideration that we authorize the mayor to have, make arrangements for Mr. Lucero to at least have an interview before us, and then let's make a decision from there. I just don't understand. He, we talk about local people, this is a local person, he's worthy of an interview, and then we can decide and bring out our comments based on his response to our questions. So I offer that for consideration of the mayor and council.
Okay, is anybody else that I need to say? Jorge Maldonado?
You know, I agree on everybody's wanting to stay local, you know? I think that's the only way we're gonna have somebody that understands Nogales, you know? But at the same time, you know, I think, you know, there's, there's names in-house already, you know? John's done a great job in-house every time he's been asked to step in, in the battlefield, you know?
He can only be here for two months.
Yep.
His time is almost up.
Unless he gets a full time.
No.
No, he can't. He doesn't have a degree.
We've been asking John, and then he even told me, even if I had a degree, I don't wanna stay where I am, Mayor.
Did you say that?
Yeah. For that, John. John, John would be a great city manager, I know that. Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor. You done? Go ahead.
Well, the other thing is, you mentioned you want somebody with city manager experience. The last time that we went that way, we heard from city managers, but they're, they were asking for too much money.
No, they had a job.
Well, they had a job, and they.
We called them, and we sat on it too long, and the people that we first called, called us and said that they had been employed already, so they were pulling their applications out.
And, and also, they were asking for a lot more money than what we were offering. So, so, you know, we're gonna be paying people from the outside all that money, you know, let's, let's consider somebody that's local. Give them, give them an opportunity to, to, to get that experience and, and to enjoy that type of salaries, local here in the community.
I can understand. Not some of theirs.
Well, I, I agree, I agree with, you know, the best, the best deal would be get somebody local. And why don't we have Mr. Lucero put in an application and, and get two or three more so it could be transparent, so it just won't be, you know, 'cause the public's gonna look, well, look, they, they, he was an ex-councilman, and they put him as city manager, though, you know, get two or three candidates and have Mr. Lucero put in an application too, if he's interested in the job. You know, yeah, sure, he's, he's gonna be in the interview, and, you know, we can, we can go through the interview process, but still, I think we should have at least one or two more candidates to be transparent about the whole thing.
Well, the only other one that, that applied, but he doesn't have municipal experience, is a, a local who is Gabe Galindo.
I.
We can interview him, too.
I think we should, we should interview, you know, luck is one person, it's gotta be two or three.
Well, but I'm just saying, I, my suggestion for one person is just to start it off and then see, well, maybe we don't, maybe we need to go out more, but at least to give that individual the opportunity.
Sure.
Which I think, you know, I, I'd want this time to be a local person, somebody who loves Nogales, lives in Nogales, loves a small community, loves a border community. There's a lot of people.
I agree that, that if somebody should be local this time, I mean, let's.
No, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, somebody says.
I think like in, like in everything, we need to have, you know, three, four, or five applicants to look at them. You know, I can't, I can't just justify saying, just because he's local, that's gonna be our best bet, right? I mean, obviously, if that had been the case, we would have all said, everyone should be local. And I think either way, we, we need to look for somebody, but looking for somebody is gonna take us into the future. We just can't say, let's just stay local. Let's go ahead and get some people there, and then we can go ahead and make a judgment. We can say, we like this, or we don't like that, and they can give us their opinion of how they think. Just because it's local doesn't mean that he will be able to guide us into another, into another ten years or five years. We need, we need to have people that we can look at, we can trust, and we can be comfortable with. And I, I, again, I think if we have three or four people, and I think we can have three or four people that, that will be able to go ahead and apply for that position, and then give everybody, everybody a meeting, and then we can decide. But I can't, I can't agree just, let's just, let's just say, we're going local, period.
We can always trust the out-of-towners, but we can never trust the people in town.
Right, it's not that, it's just a matter of.
You just said it.
There's, there's people out there, there's people out there, and we just can't say, this is it, this is, this is all we're gonna do, if we're just staying local. I, 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 I'm local, I believe the people, local people are very good, but in that case, we're just shutting off the rest of, the rest of everybody else from this, basically from the state of Arizona or from anywhere else, and we can judge to be, to be very good.
Well, that's what the city of Douglas did. They brought in somebody from the outside, that was the only person, they kept that person there, they brought somebody else in from the outside, they kept that person there. Nobody from the, internal Douglas was, in my view, was interested in the position. But they didn't have to go out for interviews. They did that person, they liked that person, that person stayed there, and then they brought somebody else in, and they gave the job to that person.
And what we ask, what we should do?
Well, we, we, we can do the same thing. All you gotta do is offer a contract for two years. That's all we're limited to, is twenty-four months. That person stayed there for eighteen months to make an impact.
Vice Mayor?
As long as I can remember, you know, we've had city manager from outside of Nogales, and, you know, they haven't worked out either, so, so, you know, let's, let's try it locally now. Where Mr. Hinesian said, just 'cause he's local, it doesn't mean that he's gotta be hired, but at least give him an opportunity to interview, so we can ask him questions and, and see what he can bring to Nogales, what he can offer to Nogales, and how he can work with the staff here in that city, and he's familiar with the board town, with community, the board town community, and bilingual is a big thing here.
Yes. Well, I believe discussion is good, you know, but the thing is that on the recruitment process of it, I also believe that to have a good selection to pick from is good also. And, and, and that's, that, for me, I think it's, it's important, too. But, but also, I don't want this to be dragged around. I don't want this to drag on. If, if we can have the finance department, I mean, the human resources department, and, and, and I'm not gonna say John, because it's not John's responsibility, give us names that we can interview within the next three weeks, four weeks max, then, then that's not what we want. Let's not do that. Let's not go into the holidays. We're, we're still in the COVID, you know, situation. We do need a city manager. John's time is getting close, you know, his time will just go right by, you know, if it's time that he can be a deputy city manager. And, 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 and it's our responsibility, it's our responsibility to, to bring in somebody to interview. And, and, and I don't see why Mr. Lucero could not have an interview. There's no reason why. If he was on the list, on, as a matter of fact, after everything happened, he's on the shortlist, because if we wouldn't have gotten the previous city manager, he probably would have been on that second round of interviews. 'Cause I was looking through the list today, I have it in my office. So, so I don't see any reason why he can be interviewed, and he should be interviewed. To interview somebody doesn't mean you're gonna hire. It's good to find out exactly if he is a person that we need for, to be our city manager and, and to represent the city of Nogales. So, so this is my, my thought, members of the city council. We give John and, and his direction to human resources to see what they can find in three weeks. I don't need ten, twenty, thirty names, I need one, two, or three names. I don't need ten, twenty, thirty names, I need one, two, or three names, like Mr. Diaz said. And then at, after that, if there, if there's nobody out there that is willing to be interviewed for the city manager's position in the city of Nogales, then by the next meeting that we have here in the city council chambers, we'll be interviewing Mr. Lucero by himself. So, John, I don't know, members of the council, how, how you feel, but John, that's what I believe that you should do and, and, and go to human resources and see what they can get.
I, I concur with you, Mayor, and I think that's fair, I think it's absolutely fair. I think we should keep it right here and then make a decision from there.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair perspective, and I, I don't think there should be any reason why anybody in this council should want to turn their back on the local people.
No, that's what I'm saying, and, and I'm willing, like I said, he was on the second round. And you can look at the list, I have it in my office, I can give you all a copy, he would have been the second round. Because when we asked the people to interview, remember, some bailed out, and then we ended up with only one person. If we were to select that person, the next round, Mr. Lucero would have been on there, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Another thing is, uh, we have to make sure that Mr. Lucero is available.
No, yeah, that's why, I, I understand, no, I understand that, but I mean, you, he'll, he's gonna have to be reached out by human resources to find out that he is available while the process is, uh, uh, finding other candidates are, are there. But, uh, we're not, we're not gonna go through the holidays or, or to the end of the year and not having a city manager. I'm sorry, we have to select the city manager and do it as soon as possible. And I need your help.
Yes.
I, I just wanna, I wanna be, uh, really clear because, um, this is a great opportunity for this council to hire their next city manager. And, uh, we stand ready to assist, as we always have been, to assist this council make their decision on who they wanna interview, where they wanna advertise, who they wanna go look at. Uh, we do have a list that was established by this council, well, no, by the council at the time, right, of candidates. Uh, we can, if that's the direction of this council, reach out to those people on that list, see if there are any of them that are still available, and bring it back to us, uh, to Mayor and council. We can also, uh, start a recruitment and, uh, an announcement process, if that's the wish of this council. All I'm really saying is that what makes it difficult, and what has been difficult in the past, is when staff gets direction from Mayor and council on the process every month, right? So, we'll be back next month for new direction. So, I, I don't know if we can establish exactly what the process you all want tonight, but staff needs direction, and, and we're willing and ready to do whatever direction this, uh, body gives us to help you select, recruit, and hire your next city manager. So we stand ready, Mr. Mayor, but we do need clear, clear direction. Well, no, so we, we, we hear, uh, great discussion, great difference of ideas of how you wanna move forward, but it's hard for us to filter through all of that and come up with exactly what you all want as a body to hire or go through your process.
Well, John, uh, I was just looking, I, I do have a list here with me, and there's only four from Arizona. The rest are from Dodge City, Indianapolis, Albuquerque, Florida, Monterey, California, Los Angeles, Washington, four. Mr. Lucero, go ahead.
I make a motion to authorize a city manager to contact the four individuals that applied uh, for the position of city manager on our last round, uh, from the state-
They would be, Mr. Verona, they would be the ones that would have been on the second round?
Yes.
Those are the ones that I'm saying, there's-
That's fine.
There's one from Douglas, two from Nogales, and one from Rio Rico.
To authorize the city manager to do that here. In conjunction with Mr. Massey to make sure everything is legally followed.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I would like, I would like for, for the, uh, human resource director just to check for the legal cities and towns and any other contacts in the state of Arizona of available, of any available people there.
Yeah, no, why not, we could do that, we could do that, just, just to check, you know, but I mean, but if we're gonna, we have a motion on the-
Right, and so that's what I wanted to bring to your attention, Mayor. Does the move-in, Councilman Verona can, uh, agree to a friendly amendment from what Mr. Hennecian also-
No, Mr. Hennecian's comment is fair, I agree with that, that is fair. We should do, look at all avenues as we do this, he hasn't, he hasn't tried to dismantle the main motion, he's trying to enhance the main motion.
Okay.
That's the difference, so I concur with him.
Is there, do we have a second on this?
Yes.
You do? Okay, just wait a second.
Right.
And you've got your clarity?
So, I, I, I believe I got my clarity, we will reach out to the four Arizona applicants that were on the last list, we will also reach out to the Arizona leaders of city and towns and see if they have an existing list of city managers, right, that could be considered for employment, and bring that list back to the mayor and council, uh, as soon as possible, right? But, but, it's gonna be clear, uh, we're, we're looking to see if they have existing list of city managers to bring forward, not asking them to do a recruitment or a top recruitment.
Just existing list and, and, and-
Correct.
And when they do have the list, then we have to find out, uh, are they compatible to the city of Nogales?
Right, but, but-
That's, that's up to you.
We'll let you guys decide if they're compatible.
Yes, yeah, because otherwise, uh, they're not.
But also, Mr. President, also, any, any other, any other, like legal cities and towns, there might be other, you know, the, the human resource director can, can tap into, right? And see if they have anybody that's, that's available at this moment, or within a week or whatever.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, maybe-
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe it's a good idea, we set a limit, you know, applications, we don't wanna get sixty-four applications at last-
No, 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 we're not gonna go through that, no. There's, there's four of them, like I said, one Rio Rico and one Douglas and two Nogales that are close by, that would understand a border city, would understand, they're probably all bilingual. And, uh, besides that, I only know of one, which is, uh, Mr. Lucero, that was a manager, I don't know if the other was, weren't, weren't. Their names are here on the list, I would have to look at their resumes to see if they're there or not, but I do have the last list, this is the list we all got, remember?
Yeah.
And we all voted on this together, that's what I'm going through. And, and, uh, those are the only ones that are local. And, 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 we, we have, uh, we do have one from Gilbert, uh, but, uh, we're, like you said, we don't want, uh, you know, uh, six, seven, thirty, or forty, the, remember we reduced it to twenty-two, was it? Then from twenty-two, we brought it down and we, to ten, and then from ten, we, we never got past the second, the twos and the ones. Remember how we did it? And these are all threes, five, sixes, and then these are all twos and ones, right there, okay? So, we'll do that, John, your, your, your task is there, your job is there. Okay? And then, uh, we, we have the second on, on motion there? Okay, are we all agreeing with that, comfortable?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of seeing the party saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I said it, thank you very much, John. E, discussion and report on the dollar amount of lost water during the April second, twenty-twenty water main breakage. The reason I'm putting this back on before we, uh, uh, make a motion on this or whatever, the reason I'm putting it on is because, uh, it was two months, almost three months ago, or two months ago, that we were here and we talked about this, and I asked that I wanted the dollar amount and how many gallons, and up to now, I haven't gotten anything from the director. So I asked John that I wanted to put it on the agenda, and I want the director to tell us exactly what happened and the dollars and everything, because, you know, it's good for us to know what happened. And, uh, and basically, we know what happened, but it's good to ask for us to know exactly, exactly the, the cost and, and the amount of water lost. Now, this is the first time I see a document. Uh, I could have gotten this two months ago, but I had to ask for it again, and I had to place it on the agenda because, uh, the public works director was not, uh, bringing this forth. So, you have that in front of you now, gentlemen? You have an idea how many gallons were lost?
Mr.-
What it cost?
Mr. Mayor, is there a difference in the definition of irrigation versus consumption?
Well, because the thing is that it was, everything was sent down the river.
But if it wasn't-
Because it was, you know, 'cause that, if you, if you use consumption, it's probably gonna be cost more, it's gonna cost more.
Well, that's what we should use, that should be the definition, consumption.
Yeah, consumption, because that water was for consumption, yes.
So it should, the, the factor there should be for consumption, not for irrigation.
So, is the director online?
Yes. Alejandro, you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, can you answer that?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
So, Alejandro, I, I, I believe the question was, you chose to use the sale of water for irrigation to do your calculation to, for the two million gallons of water? Uh, I, I guess the, the question is, uh, what is the price per one hundred thousand gallons for consumption of water instead of irrigation of water?
Well, all, all the rates that are established by Mayor and council for consumption, uh, depending on the, the use is the rate that's supplied, and, uh, the reason I, I choose irrigation, and also I have for, uh, the option to use construction because of large volume of water, normally, no house, just two million gallons of water in, in a single day, so that's, uh, that's the reason that, uh, I, I selected that.
But Alejandro, uh, this water was horrible water, it was to be sold for consumption. It wasn't water that was, it wasn't gray water, it wasn't other water, this was drinkable water.
Yes, and I-
It would have been, if we would have lost the two million gallons, it would have been sold to, for consumption.
Yes, the irrigation rate that is, uh, established is for a puddle of water, well, irrigation is not-
Okay, so what is the cost, what is the cost for consumption? What is the loss on it?
The, the loss, um, based on irrigation, what you have in front of you that's eight thousand, uh-
No, 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 for consumption, what is the difference of the cost?
Yeah, the, the, the problem right now is to calculate that, if you wanna use that for residential use, if that's what you're asking me, uh, uh, the, the calculation has to be done based on the consumption at different scales, that, uh, the first, uh, three thousand gallons is one rate, then the, in the next, uh, thousand, uh, ten thousand gallons is different rate, so it's really hard to calculate that based on those rates because depending on the time of use, if, uh, you use that in a month, it's different than if you use that in three months. So, the high volume of water is only calculated for construction or irrigation, because that's where the rates are established.
Uh, Alejandro, I, I understand, Alejandro, what you're saying, but those two tanks were meant to be sold for consumption. I'm saying, they don't come out of a pipe, out of the ground, out of the well directly to, and then spill down on a field or a, a golf course or gray water. These two tanks of water that were emptied were for consumption. Uh, I need to know why, how much we lost, because you, you're not calculating it right, Alejandro, because that water should have been sold for residential or business or whatever, but for consumption. So I, 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 why, why did you calculate it for irrigation, just because it went down to the wash?
I understand what you call consumption, uh, irrigation is the consumption, construction is consumption, so maybe it's-
Come on, John, hop in there and get him straight in there, wasting time.
Correct.
Wasting time.
If you wanna calculate this as a domestic, uh, use, it's a consumption too. Uh, the, the problems, the, the different scales that we've got, and the, and the rate that you established, uh, domestic is based on conservation scales.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I can help you with this.
Oh, please, please do that.
What we'll do for you, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, we can do this in very short, uh, order. There's a two million gallon, uh, multiplier here, there's different rates for different types of consumption. Uh, there, by night, I, I believe there might be only a dozen or so at the most, right? We can very easily put a spreadsheet and do the multiplication for each type of consumption.
So you have to-
Provide it to you tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Okay, I will get that to you guys.
Yes, please, because, uh, it, uh, you know, the definition of consumption, I'm not talking about irrigation, I'm talking, you go drink it, okay? That's, that's my thing.
So we have a different consumption scale from, for, for all the water that was sold in city of Nogales, one of them is an irrigation, a construction, all the way down to-
Don't use those.
Uh, you know what I'm gonna give you? I'm gonna give you all of them.
Yeah.
Every single one of them, all the way from irrigation to somebody who will use-
Okay, yeah, this way we can, we can-
There you go, so you'll get them all, and then I can average them, I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it all to you, so we'll, we'll give it to you first thing tomorrow morning.
Please, yeah, because I waited two, I waited two months for this, which is not what I was expecting. Will you go say something, Vice Mayor?
Uh, uh, Mr. Kristin, you answered the question, I was gonna say, if they average it out, you know, 'cause he's talking about that there's different situations, uh, on, on the water use, from, uh, different quantity of water, there's one rate and then it goes up to the next level. So if you average it out, you know, that'd be the, the best way to go, at least give us an idea.
What, what you will give will be all of our rates, right, all of our rates, and I'll explain what those rates are for, and we'll multiply those rates, right, for the two million gallons. So you'll have a whole bunch of different numbers, and it's very easy to add, really, just a math song.
That's fine.
Perfect.
Okay, we're gonna go to orders now.
Thank you, Alejandro.
Thank you.
A, consideration possible action of order twenty-twenty dash zero-eight dash zero-four-three, order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, appointing members to the, uh, appeals commission.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Who, who is recommending these individuals?
Let me see. Mayor Garinoz.
Well, ju, just, just on that, Mayor-
Yes.
I know a lot of people, unfortunately, I don't know these people, if, when you come in with some recommendations, it helps. If you, if they just turn in a, a resume or something, so I, I know what I'm voting on, I don't, I may know them, but I don't know if I know them, or I may not know, but it's nice when you put in the resume of each individual so we can see a little bit of a who they are.
Dan Valencia was our employee, retired, he worked here in the water department, right here, in the window, just retired a month ago. That's who, that's who Dan Valencia is. And Gracie Mariscal, she's, uh, she's with us at the post at the VFW, she's a veteran, and she is a person that loves Nogales and would love to be part of the commission.
I come here and I just don't remember this.
You don't remember Valencia?
No, I don't.
Uno peloncito así como yo bien guapo. Yeah, you, you know, you know Dan Valencia.
Well, maybe, but I, but it helps if you do that.
He used to be, he used to be, uh, the, our- He used to be, he used to be our license, what was he, John, license?
In our sales tax audit.
Audit, yeah. And he was on the window here for several years.
Was he on the window?
He did belong at the window several times, but typically he was in the-
Okay, now I, he was in the back part there. Oh, okay, that's, he just pinch hit it at the window.
That's correct. Yes, go ahead.
And Graciel also works at the probation department.
Yes. Good people.
No, no, I'm not questioning that, I just like to be, be informed of who they are, it doesn't take that much, and that way we can just go through with it.
Any more discussion, or do I have a motion?
We have a motion in a second already.
Are you sure? We can't distract it.
No, we got a motion in a second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it, thank you very much. B, consideration possible action of order 2020-08-044, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, ratifying the city's acceptance of CARES Act Fund. Discussion. John, you have something on that one? No, we don't?
No, sir, this was the CARES Act-
Yeah, same one.
We received the money, the mayor needed to sign it, and we're ratifying it tonight.
All right. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. C, consideration possible action of order 2020-08-045, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales approving a one-year extension on the current agreement with the Nogales Police Officers Association. Discussion. Were in none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, have it. D, consideration, possible action of order 2020-08-046, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving a memorandum of understanding with Santa Cruz County and Boys and Girls Club. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is the reason we're writing this MOU, is this because they're going to be repairing the roof?
No, because it's our building, and they're using their funds on our building.
And Mr. Mayor, the county's project administrator is on the line. If you'd like to hear from her, her name is Mary Dahl.
Sure.
Yeah, let's see if we can take her off of hold for a second.
Mr. Mayor, what is it, the CDBG funds that are going to be spent on our building? So I'm ready, I should have-
Are you there, Mary?
I am.
Hi, Mary, how you doing?
I'm well.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Um, thank you. Did you happen to hear the Vice Mayor's question about why we came forward with this memorandum of understanding, and what's the city's role in this versus the county with, versus the Boys and Girls Club? Can you explain what this document does for us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I was apparently on a lag on YouTube, so I didn't know you were already at this agenda item. So what, what this, what this MOU does is allows the county to go forward with the improvements using the CDBG money on the Boys and Girls Club building, which of course is a city building. It spells out our roles in this project, and makes sure that at the conclusion of the project, the city has accepted the improvements, the county has accepted the improvements, Boys and Girls Club is happy with the improvements, and those facilities that are turned over to the city in good order for, for you to, to manage as appropriate with your, with your lesssee. I think that kind of covers it, Mike, does that sound right?
That sounds right to me. The mayor has stepped out, Mary, so our Vice Mayor is now in charge. Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mary.
So, right, just to recap, there is no money from the city required on this. Our lesssee, Boys and Girls Club, through their director, Vicky Bardin, approached the county for their CBD, CDBG dollars, and that, and this project was selected, so Mary is the project administrator. The request for bids has already been published, so we're expecting, when do you think a project would go underway, Mary?
Thanks, Mike, Vice Mayor and council members. I would think that we would be able to give the notice to proceed in September, and we have a 60-day construction period, so we want to move right through it as quickly as possible, because the Boys and Girls Club activities are going to have to be suspended during the course of construction. So this is a fall project, we'll get it done just as quickly as we can.
Just one more question. Was the, the CDBG funds awarded to the county, or?
This is county CDBG funds, so every, you know, this part of your county CDBG funds, Mary, have been devoted to this project, correct?
That's correct. One of three projects that the Board of Supervisors selected this, this funding cycle was, was, is this one, that's correct.
Yes, it's CDBG program money. And CEGO has a role in, in the whole administration of the project, is that correct?
That is also correct. Of the, approximately $175,000 that we've set aside, CEGO has its share, which is customary, and I think the city also uses CEGO to do the administration.
Thank you, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Massey, a year or two, we, we did put in some money also to fix the roof. I see they're, they're going to be doing some ceiling also, and let's make sure that, you know, Vicky and, and Mary all get together and make sure that we don't interrupt what they did, so i- in case we do have, you know, insurance on, on what we had done two years ago or a year ago. Warranty on it.
No, we didn't do that building. We did the gym.
We did the gym, so this is not the gym. That's not the gym.
Right, Mary, did you hear Councilman Maldonado's comments to make sure that whichever contractor is selected, that they don't interfere with the roofwork that had been done? But our understanding is roofwork was done on the gym, and this is of course the old building, so, but that is something that you can take a look out for the city's interest in that, is that right, Mary?
Absolutely. In fact, I, I appreciate it being brought up this evening, when we have our pre-bid meeting on Friday, I'll make sure to, to highlight that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay.
So, let's call for a question?
Are we ready to call for a question? Yes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it?
All right, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
E, consideration possible, possible action of order 2020-08-047, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, adopting a supplemental benefit, a supplemental benefits plan for public safety employees. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, so Arizona's statute requires us to develop a plan, supplemental benefits plan for our public safety employees. These require, and what that does, in case there's an ongoing qualifying for injury, the City of Nogales will be able to regularly pay home pay the best we can, what they would have wanted with that, using industrial comp rate, so they'll become industrial comp rate, and whatever is lacking to make their regular take-home pay decision, Nogales will put it in, by law, and they have to do that and develop that plan. So we have developed that plan, that's a plan that's going to be now embedded by our city resource department and our legal department, to make sure that it conforms to all the legality and statute, and it's that regulation that Mayor and Council passes this policy on your sort of.
Okay. Discussion. Were in none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, second. F, consideration possible action of order 2020-08-048, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, appointing members to the Board of Adjustments. Second. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Massey?
Sir?
I don't understand the comment there, that to become a member, you have to be a property owner. I thought that went away when, when the times were, in order for me to go vote, I had to be a property owner. I think that that's the most discriminatory regulation that we have, that a person to sit on, on a committee for the City of Nogales has to be a property owner. You mean that the person that rents a house doesn't pay property taxes indirectly? Of course he does, of course he does. Why do we have such an antiquated requirement?
Mr. Mayor?
Just go ahead.
That is straight from the statute, so if you want me to go ahead and set aside the-
State statute?
State statute.
Says you have to be a pro, that's the most antiquated thinking I've ever seen. I thought that went, went out, when that was a requirement to go vote. I've never seen a requirement like that.
This is not a fundamental right to be part of a commission or a board, so that, I would distinguish that right there, that, you know, the right to vote, of course, is a fundamental right, but, but at any rate, the idea is that what a Board of Adjustment does, and I, and you've sat on the Board of Adjustment, I think, in the county, is when there's a zoning issue and there's an appeal, it goes oftentimes to the Board of Adjustment. So because we're dealing with zoning regulations, I think you can kind of understand what that requirement is, because a property owner would also be sensitive to the issues involved with relaxing. That's usually what we're asking a Board of Adjustment to do, is to issue a variance or for some other reason to relax the requirements of the zoning code. Now, the zoning code has been adopted by City Council, Board of Adjustment can be appealed to to relax it, and then that issue does not come back to City Council. If there's an appeal, it goes to the Superior Court. So the Board of Adjustment does play a quasi-judicial role in the whole enforcement and being able to live within the requirements of a zoning code. So that's where I think it comes from, if I could kind of make a guess, but it's what the legislatures, whatever, they thought about it.
Well, uh, non-persuasive.
Okay.
But I, I, I will tell you, one, I've, I've never sat on a Board of Adjustment, planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, then, all right.
But I just don't agree that a person has to be a property owner to sit on one of our commissions. I just adamantly, uh, thank you, Mary.
Are you going to ask me who selected the names?
No, because I know, because you called me this time, you didn't call me on the other one, but on this one you called, so I know.
Mr. Varona selected one of the names, and the person agreed to be part of it. Okay. So this is following the way they're going to go. Three, the, a three-year term would be Ramon E. Avila. Two persons for the two-year term, that'd be Norma Tretto Mejalish and Gilbert J. Tolar. The one-year term would be Alexa Ramirez and Victor Coles, and one of the alternates, I didn't get two, I only got one, is Javier E. Lopez. Okay? All right, so, did we have a motion on this? No, we didn't, huh? Yes, we did.
I think we have motions on everything there. We're just on top of everything.
You guys are on top of it, huh?
Of course.
It's these two right there, they're on top of it.
They're the ones that are doing it, okay. So, are you in no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Cue the eyes have it. Ordinances. A, consideration of possible action or ordinance, O, 2020-08-004, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, amending Nogales Development Standards Code regarding public roads dedication. Second. Now we do have discussion. Then, Mr. Massey, can you kind of express on this?
I, I can give a quick report on this, it's being submitted for council discretion, which means, well, obviously you've got the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this did go in front of Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration and possible recommendation, and they did recommend it, but this language from the ordinance came as a result of prior direction from council to me, to come up with a mechanism, an amendment to the zoning code to allow for the dedication of a public road that doesn't currently meet public road standards. And so what this ordinance does is it sets aside whatever the standards are, and it says, regardless of the standards, if the council wants to, under these following conditions, you could accept it. So that's why it's being submitted kind of as council discretion, because it-
Originated with council.
Okay, does anybody else ask any discussion? Go ahead, you guys say something?
Owen wanted to make sure that I pointed out that my office received a comment from an interested party in this work, and I couldn't figure out the meaning, and I have attached this comment letter to the issue about two discs in a tenure platform.
And you are alluding to Mr. Capen?
That's the one.
Okay.
Did, okay, did, did we ever get a letter from ADOT in reference to saying that ADOT was paper? Can I ask you that, Mr. Kristin? Yes?
I have never received any letter from ADOT or looking for anything.
Or any comment or anything from the director saying that they were willing to pay for it? Yes.
So I just want to be clear, what's in front of us is an amendment for an ordinance-
Yes.
-allowing us to accept the dedication of the road. And what I think what you are asking is, have I had any communication with ADOT, reference bell road? Because the, the reason why we're even here to entertain this change to the ordinance is because of a very lengthy discussion involved in having to work with months over bell road.
Yes.
I have had communications with ADOT, reference to bell road. I can tell you that my last communication with the district director, ADOT, or some district, is currently there is no money available for any part of bell road. And, and I think there's a little bit of miscommunication going on, and you can correct me if I'm wrong this hearing, but we were also in a meeting with the director when we spoke about bell road, that's the director, Alakowski. My conversation had been with the district director. Bell road is not part of the 189 project. There is no funding to develop, pay, or do anything with bell road. Plus, what I think of this communication is, is that ADOT will never entertain spending taxpayer dollars on a private road. So what, what ADOT's saying is, unless you own it, city, there'll never be funding available for you to improve that road, but not only bell road, any road in the city. So unless it's, unless the, the road is going to be used by the public, they can't, just like we quit it, we quit it. That's been my conversation with the, with the director. They have been able to, within the right of way of the one eighty nine, expand a turn lane for a future development of Bell Road. Uh, that is going to, to occur, and they will also be stubbing out for future traffic light for Bell Road. But to actually build that J that we've all talked about, I think we all know what we're talking about. And, or to improve the private section of Bell Road, there is no money, uh, on the table. There's no money in the future, uh, that has been identified to do, uh, any of those projects. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think we've been very fortunate that ADOT didn't cut out, uh, the one eighty nine project, because they are cutting, cutting back on private. So we're, we're very lucky and very grateful that they didn't cut out the one eighty nine project. That's my report to you as far as Bell Road goes in my conversation with ADOT.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm, uh, think that, first of all, I think that the planning and zoning is making a solid recommendation to us. A solid recommendation that the city should go ahead and incorporate that portion of Bell Road into our city infrastructure system. I'm, I'm very supportive of this. Uh, there are a lot of grants that we apply for, uh, that we can go ahead and, uh, get that road to the standards that it needs to be. The business community is seeming to reach out and saying that they need some help. I don't see why we, anybody here, would wanna turn their back right now during these fragile economic times on the business community. We just approved right now the ratification of the mayor's signature on a two point three million dollar CARES Act. Everybody that I see from Saguarita up north, everybody is using money to help their business community succeed. In conjunction with that, we have the overweight fees. That's been coming to us from the trucking industry. Everybody likes to talk about, ah, who's gonna pay and who's gonna do the money? Well, we receive millions and millions of dollars from overweight fees from the trucking. That's the business community that wants, is reaching out for help. Just as a small part here, we wouldn't have completed under the project on Perkins Street or Crawford Street or McNabb Street if we wouldn't have had the money from the overweight fees. We've been able to receive money, and these people went to the state legislature to go ahead and tax themselves. So I can't just comprehend why anyone would be against something like this, that we could take it over. We can say it's, it's part of our structure and then go back to ADOT and say, do you have a little bit of help, financial, that you could help us finish this road? I know that the Port Authority has worked very diligently on the one eighty nine, and I don't think it was going to disappear. Now they're working on, on Ruby Road and also making that interstate connection on the west side of the interstate from Ruby Road to Rio Rico Drive. So there's a lot of things that are happening to improve. This is something that I feel that is greatly is going to enhance our business community. It's going to enhance our relationships with the business community. And I hope all of us could be supportive of something of this nature, where we have the, the means to, to go ahead and do this. I hope there's not any negative connotations on this, because they've helped us financially though too. And we need to go out, instead of just receiving money that we need to take, we also need to, even with, uh, the general plan, we, we discussed about revenue, but nobody's willing to discuss about how we're gonna stay alive with the limited revenues that we have. So I'm very supportive of this. I wanna help the business community. I want our business community to prosper. The more they prosper, the better community we're going to be able to go ahead and field in our community. This isn't something that's gonna make us or break us. But I think that it's a good opportunity for us to say, we're interested in the business community of Nogales to be successful. I conclude my comments there, Mr. Mayor, but I will ask if there's any negative connotations that I be afforded the opportunity to rebuttal.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, uh, I agree with Councilman Barona. And we've, we've been spinning this thing around for the last two years. I've only been here a year and a half, but I know it started before I came in. And we keep talking about economic, economic development, but then we're not willing to, to take a risk and, and invest in improvements to the, to the infrastructure of the, of the, of the roads. Uh, it's, you know, if any business is gonna come to the community, they don't want access to that property, and they, they don't want, uh, good access to the property. They don't wanna go through potholes and dirt roads, and, and they don't, they won't wanna invest in our community. And not only that, you know, the, the current, uh, businesses that we have there might just get out of there and, and go somewhere else where they can be, uh, uh, helped in, in, in that type of way. So, so I, I, I agree totally with Dr. Barona.
Is there any other question? Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could, you know, uh, I think, uh, just on Mr. Dr. Barona's comments here, I would like to just clarify some of those comments. First of all, when, when, uh, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you and I were involved very, very strongly with the overweight money situation. And we were promised to have, at that time, they said we were gonna get a million dollars a year in overweight money. And then things seemed to change constantly, that they getting overweight money should be used for something here. When we were promised that money, there was no stipulations as to what that money was gonna be used for. But in the last administration, we did go ahead and give half of our overweight money to, uh, I, uh, ADOT or the, for Marcos Road, right? And we gave half our overweight money. We didn't have to. We gave half our overweight money. At the time, I made the comment, that's it, we need the money for the streets of Nogales. For, we have Ayer Verde, we have, uh, uh, Elm Street, we have hundreds of streets that we could use the money for. We're not using them. We gave that money away for ten years. And the comment they said, again, they said, that's it, we need the money for the streets of Nogales. Now we're asking, throwing the other half, right? We might as well tell all the, all the residents of Nogales, we're not never gonna have enough money to get to your streets, which is a situation we're given with constantly. So as a, as a matter of being negative, it's not negative. I want to go ahead and pave every street in Nogales, but I will not go ahead and agree to paying private streets. I have private streets, why can't I have, get my private streets paved? And if we go that way now, we will end up constantly paving developers' private streets because they did not spend the money to do it correctly. And that's, you always have the option at the beginning. Do you wanna do it correctly, or do you not wanna do it correctly? It seems that on Bell Road, we have Bell Road, and then we have private Bell Road. And that name was put in there by the developer. He said, I, this is my street, this is my private street, and I'm gonna build it to my specs, not the city specs, and I don't want the city involved in my specs. We can deal that, we can do that now with everybody. The first thing I think I learned when I, when I got on the city council was, any private street has to be the spec before we can accept it. If we accept all the streets in Nogales that are private streets, they're streets that are in business in Seattle, that people have been saying, why don't you take over the street? And, and they've been told, it's a private street, we cannot do it. So here we are again, we're, we're trying to open up a huge, huge can of worms by saying, let's go ahead and help these people. Everybody's gonna want the same help, everybody. And, and the point is, why was that road not built the specs originally? That's the question. If it was, there's a report out, paid for by the city. And this is the proposal on Bell Roads on our foot road intersection. And it's sticky, it's, it's, it says very, very clearly, the road is still worth close to being what it should be. It's, it's not meant to size, it's not meant to, to, it, it doesn't have enough asphalt in it, and then we have flood issues there. So here's a report, I think everybody should have had the report, should've read this report. It will end up costing the city millions and millions. I also heard, went through the planning, zoning, heard, heard the whole thing there. And there was comments made by different people there. And I'm always very leery when somebody tells me, it's not gonna cost you anything. Not, it's not gonna cost you one cent. It always turns out it ends up costing us money. It could end up costing the city of Nogales four million dollars, and we're saying, well, we could use the overweight money. We can use the overweight money to, to pave all these streets in Nogales. But that's what we should be doing right now, is paving streets in Nogales, residential streets. As far as the commercial streets, those commercial streets should have been correctly paved, correctly done originally. If they weren't, that's fine, that's the choice and decision made by a developer. Why should we now bail out their decisions? And this is just that one. I can imagine right now tens, maybe hundreds of developers coming and saying, oh, look, you did that for that street, why can't you do this for my street? And as far as getting money from the state, well, we need that money for other streets. As far as economic development, well, that's what the developer there's for. It's his economic development. He's the one that's making the money off this. We don't have, uh, property taxes. We don't have taxes, uh, uh, on, on a lot of those things. So any money spent there, well, I understand certain situations where we could say, we need economic development. And in Nogales, we do. But here, the situation is, the only one it's gonna benefit is the property owner there, or the property owners. They're the ones that are gonna benefit, but that doesn't benefit the city any. Why would it benefit the city any if we're not gonna get anything out of it? Where, where do we show, where do we show that we're gonna get something out? They're gonna have some employment, obviously, but everybody can show some employment. So as far as I'm concerned, and I, and again, first thing you learn is, you never accept a, a road that's not the spec. And that has been done for years and years and years in Nogales. If not, we might as well say, we'll take care of everything. No matter what it is, we'll take care of it. So I, I am completely against something like this, because the, the hole it's gonna open will cost the city millions, millions, and then everything else that we should be doing, all the roads like Perkins Street that was paved, and other streets that have been paved, Crawford Street and all that, the other streets that have been waiting. People have been waiting out for years, years, looking by around, they, years waiting. Uh, Elm Street and, and, uh, El, um, other streets, Y Street. All these streets have been waiting for years and years to get paved, and we keep telling them, we're getting there, we're getting there. So now let's just forget all those streets. Let's do, let's forget it. And that's what we would be voting for. We would be voting to tell all these people, forget your streets, we have no interest in you.
That's a lot.
Because it's not considered economic development in our case. So as far as I'm concerned, let's, let's get those people, let everybody, I, I have a list, or I have a list with me, of twenty-three streets that desperately need to be fixed. And those are the streets that should be considered. If people come to Nogales and they look at the streets and they say, wow, this is, I don't intend to live in this area, look at the streets. Those are the people that will help us. Those are the people coming in. Developers, any, any city you're in, developers, that's why it's called their developers, because they develop it, they fund the money upfront, because it's their money they're gonna be making. The city of Nogales makes absolutely no money out of that situation. So again, I'm completely, completely against something like this, and I'm for paving Nogales. I'm, I'm, I'm all for using the overweight money for what we were told it was gonna be used for. And again, again, saying that the overweight money is not being used on, on Marcos Road, half our money went to that for ten years. And, and again, now they want the other half. Let's use the other half. So what about the rest of Nogales? Should we just forget the rest of Nogales, and let's just dedicate ourselves to one street there and dedicate ourselves to just one area, and that's it? And help the developers? And I don't mind helping developers, but they're supposed to do the development themselves. That's the way it's done in Phoenix, that's the way Saguarita has developed. And, and people say, why can't we have streets like Saguarita? Well, we can have them, because first of all, we don't have the money, and we're trying to put money somewhere else that doesn't, it's not where we're supposed to be putting in money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, like my good friend Ronald Reagan said, here we go again, with a chicken little theory that the sky is falling. You've been on the council long enough, why didn't those streets get paved when you were on the council? Way before, 'cause you didn't have the money, that's why. And luckily, we have the money from the people and the business community with the overweight fees. That's how come we're able to do all of these projects. That there's going, if the concept is going to be that all of a sudden, there's going to be all of this industry, and it's gonna cost us millions of dollars, instead of FedEx moving out of Nogales and going to someplace else? You know what? The, I'll pay the millions of dollars to the city if we can get more small businesses here in the city. But we'll make that trade off with them, but come to Nogales so that we can have those jobs here in the community. We're always thinking small, so what? We can make, negotiate, every city and county negotiates with corporate America so that they can come in and do business within their city. I don't just want, I wanna pave streets, I wanna bring jobs into our community, and I wanna provide employment for our community, 'cause we are on the downhill right now as far as economic endeavors here in our community. And we've done nothing to help the business community. Even in Saguarita, they're doing something to help the, the city. Even reading in Douglas that they're helping the city. Here again, what is it that we can't do as a city to go and help these people in this area? Because somebody else is gonna come and ask? Well, if somebody else is gonna come and ask, I'm gonna give you an example. Look at all of the delays we put over there on that project, uh, that when I started here, they came over here for the paving. And they went back and forth, that there wasn't a street to enter, and that wasn't paved. What do you think that that could be developed? Well, that's why FedEx left Nogales. So we lose business, 'cause we, we ourselves hamper business community. Instead of trying to help them, we make the regulations and regulations so stringent that they just turn their backs on us and say, you know what? Lot of people though, I don't wanna do business with the city of Nogales anymore. It's too difficult to do business with the city of Nogales. I don't see anything wrong, I don't see us, uh, going to go into, uh, financial detriment. Uh, and hopefully, hopefully, there'll be more people that come and say, and work out a deal with us, you know, we're gonna build this warehouses over here that's gonna provide all of this, uh, employment. Can you help us with streets and all of that, and we'll do something to pay back? Of course, that's what we're here for. Let's start opening up Nogales. But this thing of constantly saying, well, we're not gonna pave these other streets. Well, if we're not gonna pave those other streets, what the hell did we invest three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new paving machine for? What did we invest in it for? That's what we did, is so we could pave these, these streets over here. And do we have the money? We do have the money. Have we been doing it recently? Well, that's why there's an agenda item on there, to see what streets have been paved. But that we can't help the business community, that we always have these stringent regulations, that we think of all the negative scenarios that we can think of to go ahead and block and deteriorate, uh, the future of our community. I think it's absolutely detrimental to our future to have that kind of thought process like that. I, I just don't agree with it. I am supportive of this issue, and if you want to use Vista de Cielo, well, when I was on the city council I, I just don't agree with it, I am supportive of this issue. And if you want to use Vista de Cielo, well, when I was on the city council in the nineteen eighties, we went to the developer, Mr. Spiezel, the original Mr. Spiezel, that developed all of that area. And we told him, Mr. Spiezel, we're going to pave the street to make a safe connection from, uh, Grand Avenue to Patagonia Road. We told them, we would pay for the whole thing. You know what Mr. Spiezel told us? I don't want your help. I don't want this to turn in. We have a community here and we like it, we don't want this to be a thoroughfare from one end to the other. Now they came back later. But originally, we said we would do it for the development there to bring more people, population into the city of Nogales. So don't think that all of a sudden, because the people of Vista de Cielo came, that it was that the city didn't offer to pave at our cost and I was on the council when that happened. So, we're gonna get factually, let's get our factual statements correct. And I hope, I hope every member of this council, uh, supports this, it's important.
Mr. Messi.
Just, just to come on Vista de Cielo also, every landowner there was billed for paving.
I was gonna say that.
Every one of them was billed. And when Mr. Spiezel made the same comment, I guess, to the developer there on private Bell Road. This is my road, I don't want it paved, I want people, don't want people using it that don't belong here. And so, so that's why they did not pave afterwards, the people moving in there, they said, we don't wanna live on a dirt road. And they said, well, can't you pave our road? No, we can't pave our road, we're not gonna go ahead and spend the millions. So they all agreed that they would go ahead and pay there, every landowner there paid their share. All I'm asking is that, you're a developer, that's what you are, that's where you make your money. You're not doing it for free, the people that are in Saguaroita are not doing it for free. And if you try to compare the ordinances in Saguaroita to Nogales, you, you would not be, if we had the same ordinance here, nothing would be built unless it's done exactly as they say. Same thing in Phoenix, same thing in Tucson. Tucson is always gonna refer to as not being business friendly because they have very strict ordinances. But then people keep saying, why can't we, why can't the little subdivision look like this over here? Why? Because they have stricter ordinances over there. Look at Saguaroita, everybody says amazing. Why? Look at the restrictions, they have very, very strong restrictions. You have here roads like, like Industrial Park, uh, uh, Road there, that were just paved by the city, right? From the very beginning, we did not go ahead, the city of Nogales did not specify, you have, they were gonna be using so many trucks, they had to be somewhere or they could be making turns, not using the street, not destroying the street because they were making turns. Well, we're seeing the same thing on Bell Road, and they do that, no, they have to use the street to make turns. So for the city of Nogales, we'll be eternal, eternally trying to fix those roads, right? And as far as being business friendly, I'm part of the business community. I want everybody to be business friendly. I wanna help, anybody that's in business, I wanna help them, especially in this area right now. But I certainly don't think that we should be giving private, our public money to going ahead and doing private roads that were not done correctly from the beginning. And that choice was their choice, they could have done it correctly from the very beginning, but no, they decided not to. So you have to live with what you do. If you did not do a correct roof on your house, why should you come to ask us, the city, well, look, you know, it's leaking, so can you, can you fix it for me? No. It's you, you should have done it correctly from the beginning or it should have been done correctly. All the cities that are prospering the most have this, have, have ordinances that protect the city and the people from all these things. So all I can say is, I hear people saying again, oh, they're planning zoning meeting. It's not gonna cost you any money. Well, let's put that in writing. Maybe Dr. Verona will agree and sign that piece of paper too, but he guarantees it's not gonna cost the city any money. And it's not gonna cost us from delaying, uh, uh, paving streets that have been waiting for years, ten, fifteen years to get paved. And we're jumping over right now and doing one right now because they're saying, oh, we have to have it. And anyway, FedEx is in Nogales for one reason, they're here for the money. They're not here because they like Nogales, they're only here for the money. All the companies that are, that are, that all nationwide companies are only here for one reason. It doesn't, they, they not here just saying, oh, we wanna help Nogales, right? So all I'm saying is right now, let's not spend money because it, in a private road, because it opens up a worm, a dark black hole that will suck Nogales away because every developer will now come to Nogales for you to tell us, you pave our roads, right? If they decide not to pave their roads, that's their situation. We, I can tell you right now how many developers will immediately be in here saying, if you did that for them, why can't you do it for us? And what are we gonna say to them? Well, we did because Dr. Verona didn't fight for you, right? We can't be saying that, we, we have to go ahead and be honest and straightforward with everybody. And as far as the business community is hiring, the biggest factor of the business community, but I think it's gotta be fair. It's gotta be fair for the city, it's gotta be fair for the residents of Nogales, and it's gotta be fair for the business community. And I don't see this being fair here.
Yeah, let me just ask a question, Mr. Messi.
Yes, ma'am.
Before somebody else wants to talk. Uh, and this is passed, okay? This is an ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will be, basically will be saying that from now on, we can do without this.
Well, right, what this ordinance does is creates an exception, uh, that's, uh, if I can back up, the, uh, current Development Standards Code basically incorporates the concept that development pays for itself. And that is also part of the general plan that was adopted today, development pays for itself. And one way that development pays for itself is that the developers build the road to city standards, they dedicate it to the city, the city accepts it. And from that point forward, after a two-year warranty period, the city is forever responsible for maintaining that road. And so because that responsibility lasts literally forever, then the standard is, okay, you have to build it to a certain standard before we're willing to take that liability on. And what this ordinance does is in, uh, certain limited exceptions, and I tried to make the exceptions fairly limited, but I'm certain there's gonna be other roads that come forward, is regardless of that, um, policy that exists currently in the Development Standards Code, we can, we, the city, through the actions of the governing body, city council can nevertheless go ahead and accept a dedication that doesn't meet the standards. And then you, the city ends up owning that road and then the city is responsible forever on that road. So, um, it is, um...
This is not a temporary thing like the, like the ninety-day, uh, connection fees that we did?
No, sir, this, this is undermining the entire Development Standard Code in my opinion.
That's a personal opinion, not a legal opinion. Legal opinions only, not personal.
This is, this is, uh, this is setting precedents.
It's definitely, and that's why when it was presented at the, uh, Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, it had a negative recommendation from both the planning director and the city engineer. And I think for very sound reasons. And, and it, we don't know where the, uh, where the, this is gonna lead us. But it's leading us, in my opinion, in the wrong direction.
Yeah. But that, is that your legal opinion?
That is my legal opinion, sir.
I don't think, I think you're way out of bounds, Mr. Messi. Way out of bounds on this one, getting into your personal opinion. You want a personal opinion, run for the city council. But I'm not gonna sit here and then do, do that, get back to this old time city attorney deal.
Mayor, if I may, I'm, I'm looking at second page ninety and it says, uh, quality assurance, it has a bunch of stuff, but it's... I'm looking at the quality assurance testing and it says, if a city accepts roads slash R O W on an asset basis, these facilities will not meet QA slash QC and may pose liability and maintenance issues. So, if we, if we were to pass this, we would have to do that road right away? Uh, and then what are the liability issues and personal?
Go ahead, John.
I, I think there's, again, some confusion. What you are contemplating doing tonight is changing the ordinance and giving you an opportunity to accept a road that doesn't meet our standards. This does not talk directly about Bell Road. And if you pass this ordinance tonight, the rules to accept...
Any road, any road.
Roads, any road, change, any road, change, right? The ordinance will become in effect, I believe, if you guys pass it tonight in about thirty days, like, or ninety days.
Well, um, and that's another procedural question, if it doesn't pass unanimously, it has to come back for a second reading. So unless there's a special meeting, then it'll come back in September. So, and then if it passes in September, it'll take effect thirty days after that.
And, and at that point in time, the city council would again have to make a decision whether they want to accept a road into their maintenance system that does not meet our current standards using this exception. That's what it means. So, we're talking like if we're...
So we're, so John, you're telling me that we're gonna be selective after this?
It'll be up to mayor and council to...
We're gonna pick this road, yes, this road, no, this, and yeah, like that we're gonna be? Just because we pass this, is that what you're saying?
I, I speak to what the future mayor and the council will do. All I can speak to is, this is gonna be a change to the ordinance.
Yes.
Right? It gives you the opportunity to accept a road that has been developed that doesn't meet our standards.
And I can, I can, I can tell you right now of several roads that would never, should never be, uh, accepted by the city of Nogales. Some should, but there's some that shouldn't. And that is my, my concern, is that it's not only gonna be for us, but it'll be for future councils, kinda like what John just said. So come back to somebody, you know, some years later and say, you know what? So-and-so council accepted this road and the city invested a million dollars and, you know, is it gonna be my turn to do it? Are you gonna help me out? And I can tell you, I'm not gonna mention names, but I know, I've already seen them. And, and I'm a little concerned about that because this is changing the whole, the whole policy. It's not just that road, it's not like that. It's not like the development thing that we did for ninety days, which I'm gonna place on the next agenda item to find out exactly how many people took advantage of that development, that opportunity we gave the people for reducing fifty percent of the cost. Because all those, those are the things we need to do. We gave the opportunity, you know, for economic development, to see who would come in and develop something. And I don't even know how many plans have been taken out and how many permits have been taken out in reference to that. And that's something I'm gonna bring to John to place on the agenda for next council meeting. But this is, this is my concern, okay, right now. Is, what you're doing today is basically you're doing it for the future of the Nogales. And not, not for the future councils of Nogales, that they're gonna be accepting, you know, uh, roads and, and undeveloped roads, you know, on, um, because it's gonna be brought to them, uh, because of setting precedents to them. So that's all I got to say. Go ahead, Consul.
On the clarification here, on the industrial drive, the statement was made that the city paid it. But we were fortunate that the city didn't pay for it. The city got, we were lucky to have Hyman Chamberlain in a position at a state level where he got a grant to help the city pay for that. So, we had a person from Nogales that got the resources for us. But the city, the road belonged to the city of Nogales, that's why. And then you have Frank Reed Road. What happened with Frank Reed Road? It was paved overnight and the city took responsibility for it. So where were the specifications there? Where were the lawsuits there? It was just paved overnight and the city took it over. So where was everything then? See, we, we bring out scenarios of convenience. And you can look at, like, it was alluded to in a dark hole, we're gonna get sucked into a dark hole. We're not gonna get sucked into anything. I believe that this is something to help the business community. You want me to sit here and just come up with exceptions all the time? And past practices? Here is something that we're talking about, doing something and to help. You say that they didn't want, and well, they had, unfortunately during the time, the city lost the paperwork, but they had made applications to go ahead and do that. And it just got delayed and delayed and now all of a sudden, the paperwork here has evaporated. So don't think that they didn't make an effort. So now is the time that we can go ahead and see what we can do to enhance the, the business community here. I, I just don't see all, all of this, everybody, people trying to present that everything is on the, on the black side, that we're gonna, tomorrow morning, if this passes, we're gonna file for financial bankruptcy. If these people, these, all of these companies that say are gonna be, be coming, let them come. Let's see what they have to offer to the city of Nogales and how many jobs and what kind of a warehouse they're going to build. And are we gonna be able to see how much more money and what they can contribute to the city? Stop being such a bureaucracy that all you think is, is restrictions and constraints and regulations. If it was so good like that, well, I'd like to see you coming over here and asking for something like that with all of these restraints and everything. We need to, if you wanna know the simple answer, why are people leaving Nogales? Why is our population dwindling? Why? Well, you're getting the answer right now. So don't think that helping people i- is going to turn into a, a, a black night scenario here. There's a lot of good things here and when people need help, we should be out there to help to improve the city. I just, it's amazing, this healthy, I like the discussion. But sometimes it's, I, it's frustrating that, that we take sides and this anti-business attitude, which is detrimental to... So you better just think about the overall well-being of our community because we're losing people. And we're not losing people because things are going right.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
The Consul of Verona makes it sound like the city of Nogales is the only one in the whole United States that has ordinances for construction, right? Uh, if you look, every city has ordinances for construction, some have better than other cities, right? Again, Saguaroita, take a look at Saguaroita, their restrictions are far surpassing Nogales. City of Tucson far surpassing Nogales, but you can see the outcome. And the developers that are coming to Nogales are gonna come here, they're, they're here to help themselves. They tend to help the community too, but they're here to make money, they're not here to lose money. So my deal is, let's do it correctly. Let's have ordinances like we have right now, that if it's not done to our standards, which are not just our standards, these are construction standards, these are development standards that are used nationwide, all over the United States. So let's get Nogales looking cleaner. Let, you know, people come to Nogales and they've left Nogales twenty years ago and they say, it looks, it looks shabby. Why? Because we need to clean it up, that's our, our focus. And that's where the A dot money coming to us, money coming from HUD. If any money coming to us, we need to clean up Nogales. Let's just not clean up corners, right? Let's fix up what we promised to do years and years ago. We've been promising to pave some of these residential areas now for fifteen years since I first got here and we haven't been able to do it. And is it the lack of money? Yes, it's the lack of money, that's what it is. And here we're saying, let's forget the lack of money and just whatever it takes, let's do this, it doesn't matter if it's three million... It doesn't matter if it's three million or four million. They told us it's not gonna cost us any money. Well, let's put it in writing. Let's see how many people are willing to put it in writing or come up with a bond guaranteeing that it's not gonna cost the city money. Oh, any street that, right now, we just talked about industrial, Park Drive. Well, the city's gonna be there repairing that street for the next one hundred years, for however long it takes. Yes, it's gonna cost the city a lot of money. It wasn't just money given to us, it costs the city money and the city putting money into that. And then they have to finish it, right? And, and again, was it, was it right if it had been done properly from the very beginning? And right now, you still go there and you see the trucks are parked and maneuvering on the city street. What's gonna happen? They're gonna wipe out that street. Who's gonna pay for it? I guess the city, the citizens of Nogales are gonna pay for it. They're the ones that are gonna pay for it. It just, money doesn't come just out of the air, so somebody's gotta pay for it. And again, that street may be destroyed within ten years. And what's gonna happen? Who's on the hook? The citizens of Nogales. So my opinion is, let's developers do what they're supposed to do. And there, that's why they're called developers. Let them do it, let them do it correctly, let them make Nogales cleaner, let them make Nogales more beautified. Let them do with the businesses coming into Nogales's, that's what we expect to get. Again, you can see that street, it's gonna be used constantly by trucks parked there all day or, or waiting to get into one of the warehouses because they don't have enough space there. And it's gonna destroy those streets. So again, I'm all for developers. I'm all for the city, for the economic development of Nogales. I'm all for the business community, but I'm not here to look, to look, and people look at me and say, here's another sucker coming down the street. You know, the city of Nogales is gonna be the biggest sucker in the whole situation. Let, let them, let them sign papers guaranteeing that they're gonna, they're.
They're not gonna sign anything, Mr. Henesian. Go ahead, Mr. Arona, and then we'll call, I'm gonna call for the question.
Well, I, I don't know who Mr. Councilman Henesian is referring to as the suckers, but I think that's a very condescending way to look at the city of, of Nogales when you're trying to help the business community. I, I just never heard anything, a phrase like that, to be looking at us like that. I, I still feel, contrary to all of the sentences that have been stated by Councilman Henesian, that we are here to help the community. We are here to help the business community. There's nothing that we're going to do that's gonna deprive the paving of any street. If, if they wants a scenario to come in, well, tell us where all, how come we haven't had any business communities? Come over here and tell us that they wanna build. Why? You guys have been on the council before, why haven't they come in? You've had these regulations, these burdens and regulations that, that you say shouldn't be in there. They're made for developers? Fine. I believe in less restrictions. Not more restrictions, not the liberal thinking of more and more and more governmental restrictions hampering the growth of the business community. Absolutely absurd. But here again, we're getting down to the basic foundations of what and how we wanna be viewed as trying to help the business community. I don't know, are we paving five miles, ten miles? Fifteen hundred feet? You need to put everything in the context of what we're looking at here. And if people want to go ahead and come in and make presentations in front of the council and what businesses they're going to bring, they do it in Pima County all the time. They help them with millions of dollars, the business community. The city of Tucson does too. Go look and see what the Saraweta's doing to attract businesses there. So I just don't understand this logic and thinking. I just know more and more cumbersome, cumbersome regulations instead of trying to go out and see what we can do to assist.
Just, just one more comment. I think Mr. Councilman Verona is undercutting a lot of the warehouses, roads warehouses that have been built lately that are, are, are done to the highest standards. Their, their, their buildings are the highest standards, their roads are the highest standards. And, and we can name tens, twenties, thirty of those new warehouses that are going on, not only here, but in Rio Rico. But you take a look at the warehouses that are going on at Mariposa Road, they're world-class warehouses. And, and I don't think that, that Mr. Verona is saying that, that we forced them to do that. They did the highest standards available, and that's what we're looking for. And so we're, we're saying to them, you did that, why didn't you come to us? And we would've given you more money, or we would've done this for you. As far as I can see, Nogales does more than any other city I can say in the city and the state of Arizona. Much more than Tucson does, much more than Phoenix does, and much more than Saraweta does.
Well, we do so much that the Rio Rico is growing, Saraweta is growing, but we're not.
Okay, I'll call for your question. I think we've discussed this enough, and I, I think it's time for us to make a decision. And because not only have we discussed it enough, we all know about this for the past year and a half. And, and, and I've attended meetings about this with directors of ADOT, where I was told that they were not gonna build any road or anything, that there was no funding, that it wasn't part of the project of the flyover. They told me all this stuff, okay? So I'm listening to everybody, so I'm calling for the question now, and I'm gonna make a roll call.
You wanna start?
Start with me.
Mayor?
No.
Mr. Valdona? Vice Mayor Obolos?
Hi.
Mrs. Obolos? Mr. Valdona?
Hi.
Mr. Diaz?
Uh, no.
Mr. Henesian?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, B. Consideration passing election of ordinance oh twenty twenty dash zero eight dash zero zero five, an ordinance of the city council, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, repealing chapter twenty, article two of the Nogales City Code. Who's got this?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I, I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Was there a second?
No.
What?
Second?
Thank you.
This is a housekeeping item, uh, of, of, our, uh, our article twenty, chapter two, calls out for fees for ambulance. We have not been following that, we've been following the state ambulance fees that regulates it. It's antiquated, antiquated. I'm not saying that they're right.
It's antiquated, yes.
Uh, uh, ordinance that needs to be cleaned up, we bring it forward for your approval so we can get that cleaned up, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Massey, you good with it?
I absolutely endorse Acting City Manager Kissinger's comments. Unfortunately, it's even probably a little bit more troublesome because it could be considered inconsistent. So it's, it's our own problem for having two inconsistent authorities. And so the best thing is, let's get rid of the one that we're not following so that the one that we are following is clearly and unambiguously the proper way to do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay? Yes, okay. Thank you very much, John. All the favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? Number nine, presentation, A, Streets Department, February twenty nineteen.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, mayor. The clerk is reminding me to do my job, which is,
I should've known.
Because it was unanimous, can we make another motion to waive the second reading so it will become effective thirty days from now?
I move to waive the second reading.
Second.
So we'll have to have a vote on that motion.
All the favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, Streets Department. John?
Yes, sir.
This is one thing that I don't wanna hear. I don't wanna hear anything from February twenty nineteen to, to, to twenty twenty. I wanna hear January twenty twenty to now. Because I know what we did last year and we were very successful, and this year we have not done anything. So please, talk to me.
So, Mr. Mayor, I ask my Streets Department to prepare a report of the, of the streets that, that we have paved and gone through.
Don't wanna know about that, we already talked about those last year.
So that's what I ask, Mr. Mayor, if there's something else that you want on here, I'm gonna have.
I wanna, well, I wanna know why they haven't been paving and, and the only street they paved in January to now is Newman Street. And do you have anybody there?
Yeah, we, we have Juan on the line here. Juan, uh, could you limit your comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Juan, uh, the mayor is asking you to limit your presentation to only those streets that have been resurfaced, right?
This is mayor?
Only those streets that have been resurfaced in January two thousand twenty to date.
I wanna know about the other projects up here.
Plus what's in the future?
Well.
Has been.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's because, it's because we, we, yeah, what we, what we did, John, I guess we're gonna have to wait till September. What we did is, we talked, we've been talking about Frank Reed sidewalks, paving of Frank Reed, Santa Rita. We talked about doing the, the, the southern corner of, of the four-way in Valle Verde that hasn't been done. Alice was on the, on, on the map, up to Marina, it hasn't been done.
Vitache in Valle Verde?
Vitache wasn't done. And then, what's that building, this, Valle Verde at the end, where the vice mayor lives? What's happening? So, Valle Verde, that, yeah. Because remember we did the main roads and we got to there and then said, okay, next budget, we're gonna jump onto that next year. Well, what my concerns are, and, and I'm sure not only my concerns, but the rest of the council and the citizens residents of Nogales, is that what happened to us? What happened to us this year? I know the COVID kinda throws us off, but that doesn't mean that if you're working outside paving, you're gonna, uh, you're in a better position paving than being inside of an office with this virus. So I need, I need to start getting back to what we used to do in the past. We get together and, and make decisions and start doing those jobs. And, and Mr. Arona said, we bought a paver, we have it, our employees know how to use it, let's put it to work in the residential areas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's, that, that, you know, John, and I expect this, when I saw this report and I go, I would, I didn't wanna say anything, but I know what we did last year, you, we all know.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we misunderstood because we didn't have a conversation during our last meeting. And the way I understood the conversation, and maybe I misunderstood what we were trying to go with this conversation, I understood that mayor and council wanted to show the public what had been accomplished. And so please bring a presentation, right, of all the streets that have been paved so we can show the public on YouTube, if I remember the conversation correctly, of all the streets because nobody talks about. So that's what I think we attempted to do. As far as future projects, we talked about it in a budget cycle, we listed, and we allocated funds to both projects done. And I'm assuming we'll be moving forward very quickly on this. But also remember that we came in front of Mayor and Council back in March, and we put a halt to all capital projects and, and, and we stopped it until we passed this budget. We went through the budget, we're able to secure the, the CARES Act, and the council was able to allocate some of our current board funds to balance out the budget. And now I think we're in the position to at least keep monitoring our budget to move forward on some of our projects. So that's what I can tell you, kind of where we're sitting at right now, Mr. Mayor.
I understand.
And, and with you passing the budget and mayor, and mayor and council's support, I think we're ready to start moving forward on some of these projects that have been put on hold because of those situations, amongst many other capital improvement projects that we've got hold. So if this isn't a presentation that mayor and council would like to, to see tonight, I apologize, I did, I misunderstood where we're going with that. And we can definitely bring back something more with the mayor and council.
No, I, I, I understand, John, this would've been a great presentation in January, or this year.
Remember, we even said, Mr. Mayor, if we show, highlight this, it might take away from your state of the city address that you were planning.
Well, that's, this was, this was my state of the city address, back in March.
Right, and you said, it's okay, John, let's do it in place.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, John. You know, but I, that's all right, let's, let's do this. Let, let's, let's work on Frank Reed, let's work on the sidewalks. Like I've mentioned before, rain does not hurt concrete. It hurts asphalt. Because what happens is you uncover, you remove the asphalt, you make a muddy mess, and then you can't pave. But if you form and, and prepare the surface, the substrate, to pour concrete on Frank Reed, if it rains, it doesn't matter, it's gonna help it. As a matter of fact, if it rains after it's poured, the water, cement loves water. So maybe we could concentrate on, on sidewalks. Remember I told you, without the sidewalks, we'll never pave Frank Reed. And we have all the opportunity right now with the school, is the way it is. I think maybe we should, you know, work on something like that. This way, hopefully, come January, maybe we can make a report of what we try to salvage this year because we only have five months left of the year. So, so let's, let's hopefully we can get some of the jobs done and, 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 you know? And I know so unanimously, we've all agreed that Frank Reed was, was on the top of the list and, and Alice and, and Saraweta, Santa Rita, you know? And, and let's, let's see if we can start working on those, John, if it's okay. All right? All right? Thank you, John. Juan, are you there?
Yes, sir.
No, he's the one.
Yeah, so, okay, so then, so, so you need to see a different presentation than, um, probably.
No, 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 basically, Juan, basically what we'll do is, we'll leave the presentation for later, but work, let's start getting some work done and completed so that we can have something to present either at the end of the year or the beginning of next year. Go ahead, Juan.
Okay, so you will start working on that, so hopefully it won't be affected by the COVID anymore so we had a lot of employees sick and, uh,
Yes, I know.
We picture Mr. Kissinger's data to not spend any more, any more money during the pandemic, so. So we have some, uh, uh, good reasons why we didn't make more progress.
No, no, I, I understand, Juan, I, I was in communication with John about that, and I do understand, but, but there's certain things now that you can move and, and, and start preparing on, you know? I don't wanna give you a directive because you know what happens when I do that. But John's here, the member of the council. Start on the sidewalks, Juan, on, on Frank Reed. That'll help you prepare for the future of the paving job there.
Yes, sir, something for your information, I don't know if you are aware, we are very, very close to start a design of the bicycle and pedestrian pathway that also includes Frank Reed, a portion of Apache Boulevard.
Yes, yes, I know that.
I want to work with a consultant to design the pedestrian and bicycle sidewalks in a way that do not affect the work that we'll be doing. And if we are putting sidewalks there and, and part of the capital improvement project that we have for this year is the paving of Frank Reed and Apache Boulevard also, so.
Perfect.
So you have to, we have to coordinate in a way, whatever we do, will have to be done very well that, that will not interfere, interfere with the other project.
Okay, thank you, Juan, thank you very much. And I do remember we, we talked about the, the bicycle route and the pedestrian walkway. Yes, thank you. Yes, the vice mayor wants to say something.
Mr. Herr, uh, on that Frank Reed Road project, is, is the I, the one eighty-nine project, is that gonna interfere with your project, you know? Are they gonna be funneling traffic through there?
Not at all, because we will start with a design phase first, and that will take about twelve to eighteen months. Just the design phase, so...
But that's...
We just send, we just send a check to Ada for 21,000 just for the design. Ada will pay 300 and something to the consultants.
Yeah, Juan, but that's not for the section in front of the school.
It is. It is part of the Frank Reid. Apache Boulevard is included as part of the bicycle and pedestrian.
So basically, what you're looking for, so you can't do any sidewalks right now?
We can. We can do it in a part that is wider and we can start, let's say, at CRTU Place. What's the name of that?
Yes.
That wide area. We can start there and I'm sure that it will not interfere with the pedestrian and bicycle.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. If you start there and you go in the direction of the school...
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe this is the perfect presentation that we have in September. Juan, to put a present...
Yes, maybe that's what you should do.
Bring Mayor...
Yeah, bring that back to us in September, Juan.
Of the entire project?
Yes.
To include the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And how we are reporting those.
And then see when, what you need to do, Juan, when you come back in September, is bring us the design that you're going to do with ADOT, where that ends and where you can start now without interfering or being part of that design, but still incorporating it together, okay?
All right, perfect.
Go ahead, Juan. Thank you, Juan.
And you also make sure you have the breakdown of the funds, how we're paving for the paving projects like you did here. Various grants, overweight fees, nothing from the general fund. Please illuminate that.
Okay.
Well, but typically, we don't use general funds.
You're going to use HERF funds?
Or...
Yes, HERF funds.
Previous discussion, didn't seem like that was an accurate statement.
I did not say that.
No, you didn't.
Okay. Thank you, Juan.
Thanks, Juan.
Okay, number 10, Mayor and Council's Report on Current Events. Let's start with you, Vice Mayor.
I've been doing a lot of honeydews. That's just about it. Nothing, nothing much, but stay at home.
Then you don't even know what happened.
And that's not progress either.
Basically, Mayor, it's, you know, I've been talking to Marcel on what it's going to take and we're trying to get all the details of, for Little League baseball and any baseball or even some soccer to continue with what we are authorized on the 10,000 to each sport to see what plan we come up with as to the needs of, for the parts. You know, because we don't want to do something and then all of a sudden, we don't need it. So that's basically what I've been doing.
Are you talking about the COVID?
Yep, yes. As far as events, Juan, we can stay home.
Consulman Barone, you have anything?
Yeah, if any, well... For the public, if you get a chance to pass by the... If the public gets a chance to pass by Karen Park, the workers there or the worker on the Parks and Recreation, I've never seen that park so beautiful. I mean, it's just beautiful park. I passed by there in the morning and it's just, remember when I was a kid, I used to go watch the fishes in the pond right there? Just the beauty, the way he's taking care of it, the pride that he has in that Karen Park. It's just a pleasure to pass by there in the morning. And what a good job that... I think his name is Pedro, but I'm not sure. But he does an excellent job. What a pride he takes in that.
Is that it, Consulman? See? Is that it? Is that it? Yes. Consulman? Consulman, yes?
Just working, see if you do a better thing.
Consulman?
Well, I have to say, it was a very exhausting week.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Barone, he did not exhaust himself at all. Okay, okay, my report. On July 1st, I had a Zoom meeting with Sonora Council members regarding COVID-19. Very interesting meeting. I hope we can have those more often. On July 2nd, I had an interview with Imparcial and Radiogeni and on regards to the COVID-19 also. July 7th, radio multimedia interview regarding COVID-19. I had a virtual meeting, meet and greet with Director of the VA, Jennifer Gudowski. Very good meeting. That's something I'm going to sit down and talk to you about this, Commander. It's very important. Maybe one of these days we should go meet her. Nice lady. And then I also had an interview with NBC and reference COVID-19. July 14th, University of Virginia student audio documentary regarding the US-Mexico border. On July 23rd, a census meeting with census representative. Mr. Kissinger and I attended that meeting and Judy was also present in the meeting. Very important meeting for us. And July 28th, Skype meeting with Unisource representatives regarding the Rio Rico Hard Shaw project. This is a line, transmission line, that's going to loop around and it's going to the mine and then looping back around towards the Rio Rico with the different transfer stations and substations that they're going to have on there. Very important for this area and the future of the mine. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What happened to those two reporters that were here for the Christmas parade, taking pictures and... You've never heard anything back from them?
The Shadows? The Shadows from Germany?
Germany.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they were Shadows back then and now with the COVID, I don't know what they are. I haven't heard from them at all, but they were going to finish a book. And they said the minute they finished the book that they were going to send a copy to the city of Nogales. They spent four days here. It was very good. But this COVID really turned things around. I don't even know if they continue with the project and everything is at a standstill right now. Vamos Manialas, all right? Oh, wait a minute. I forgot one thing. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I forgot one thing. This is very important. You guys have to see this. Oh, yeah, here it is. Future agenda items. Go ahead.
Just to make sure that we have that presentation on the solutions for the Public Safety Unfunded Pension and if we can have a report on the fees, the waiver of the fees for construction of the water and sewer fees.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.